Good evening, everyone. Thank you for all being here. Today is a special meeting. We're having an evening meeting, January 31st. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Shire.
Here.
Commissioner Mardian.
Here.
Commissioner Vidor.
Here.
The second item is commission chair. Vote to determine commission chair and vice chair. Who will each serve one-year term per commission rotation policy?
And that policy is that our most senior member automatically rotates into the role of chair, and then the seated members will vote for the vice chair. And the term will be for the period of 2011.
Okay. Need a...
I would like to nominate Arlene Vidor as vice chair.
Accept.
You should say you accept, yeah.
Oh, I accept.
I second.
Vote. We have a second and roll call.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Shire.
Yes.
Commissioner Mardian.
Yes.
Yes.
The one piece we left out of that is that Commissioner Mardian is our most senior member and is now the chair of the commission.
Thank you for bringing that up. I feel old now.
By tenure.
You're having a senior moment.
All right. We'll move on.
Yeah, please.
Number three, please. A report regarding posting the agenda. The agenda of this meeting was posted on or before Tuesday, January 25th, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Number four, approval of minutes of December 13, 2010, special. Anybody has a comment or any corrections or additions?
Yeah, I had a question, actually. Jay, maybe you can address this on page two, where it was talking about the Mills Act policy changes.
Mm-hmm.
I was a little unclear about why we had options in there. My recollection was that we actually selected and made a decision and voted on those options.
It looks like that was taken boilerplate, and we forgot or neglected to indicate the options. So we chose, let me see where there are options. For everyone who's listening, this was a series of discussions we had about the Mills Act program in Glendale to try to tighten up the policy that we have and make sure that homeowners who are benefiting from the tax break associated with the Mills Act were also ensuring that their properties were going to be maintained over time and that we would be able to document those changes and make sure that bad things weren't happening to our special Mills Act properties. One of the things we were asking for was that a building inspection and termite report be provided at the time of the application and then periodically. And I think we selected that it would be a period of every five years, that we would look for the resubmission. Is there another option? Yes, for the photographs, we were going to ask that the homeowners be responsible for submitting photographs of their properties and that these would be submitted every, and I believe we selected three years as the timeframe? Or was it five years?
Five.
Five years, okay.
Go inside.
We'll make those notes. It's all in our actual documentation of our discussion. This was just boilerplate that got transferred, so.
Thank you. With that, correction? Any other corrections?
Did we, in fact, say that we were going to discuss commissioner-generated proposals for future discussion at tonight's meeting?
I don't think we're going to do that tonight.
Okay. It's in the minutes, but I guess that's correct.
But it's not on tonight's agenda.
But it's not on tonight's agenda.
We're good recently. We have a lot of other things to discuss tonight.
All right.
Absolutely. Commissioner Morgan, any comments?
No.
Need a motion?
I move to approve the meeting minutes with those corrections.
I'll second.
Commissioner Mardian.
Yes.
Commissioner Shire.
Yes.
Commissioner Vidor.
Yes.
And Chair Mardian.
Yes.
Oral communication. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision.
And due to the special nature of tonight's meeting, we're expecting that most people who are here who'd like to share their thoughts with the commission about the work that's been going on over the years, or in the last year particularly, will wait till the end of the meeting after we have the special presentations. But if anyone here did want to address something before that, we still have this period open.
I have one card. Mike Moehl.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike Moehl, long-term resident of Glendale. I'm glad the city has come forward with this historic concept for the city. But, you know, I remember when it was being debated about a year or two ago at City Council meeting. And I remember Councilman Yusef, and he was saying, "Be careful for what you wish for when you create these districts." And so here we are. I understand you're going to be talking about a home that was built in the '50s, or remodeled in the '50s, in the neighborhood, or homes that were built in the '20s and the '30s. But they talk about compatibility. So here we are. Chickens are coming home to roost. We created something two years ago, and now we have to deal with it, don't we?
Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak at oral communication? I see none. Close the oral communication portion. We'll move on. Number seven, all business. A, Alex Theater GR number 20, design review for new proposal for the forecourt renovation.
Just to give a little introduction, the commission reviewed some alterations proposed for the Alex forecourt at the Alex Theater last year in January. And since that time, the proposal has changed considerably. It's pretty much a different proposal that takes on...
I'm sorry, Mr. Day, to interrupt you. I missed comments from commissioners before I move on to all business.
Okay, but I think we'll be having lots of commissioner comments later unless there are specific comments.
I had one specific comment. I don't know if anybody else does. I just had a comment. I'll make it short. A few months ago, Commissioner Amirian resigned from this commission, and I wanted to thank him for being a commissioner for a number of years. And he is an intricate part of the historical design guidelines and the ordinance. He put a lot of years in this preservation issues, and I'm certainly going to miss his artistic and romantic approach to reviewing the districts and the homes that we designate, and we're surely going to be missing them. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Day.
But on that note, on behalf of staff, I just want to say, in case former Commissioner Amirian is watching, that we also really appreciated having him on the Historic Preservation Commission and really valued his opinions, his thoughts, his thoughtfulness. And we hope that his replacement will be able to carry on that tradition. So we're excited to have a new commission member, but we're going to miss Commissioner Amirian.
Thank you.
Okay, carrying on with item 7A for the Alex Theater. The proposal has changed considerably, and the commission will now be looking at it as a new proposal, but with the memory of the kind of goals and the design concept that was used before, because we still have the same design team involved on the project. On that note, I'd like to introduce Barry McCombe from Glendale Arts, who's going to introduce the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I'm Barry McCombe. I'm the chief executive of Glendale Arts, and we manage the Alex Theater. Glendale Arts and the Alex Theater Committee have spent much of the last year reevaluating the various elements of this project in terms of the original goals that we had a year ago, and in addition to evaluating each of the design elements on a cost-benefit basis. When we first started this project more than two years ago, our goal was to breathe some life into a space that, after 17 years of heavy use and exposure to the sun and weather, was looking pretty tired. And if you've visited it, I'm sure you'll agree with me. As many, as with many committee-driven projects, unfortunately, our ideas outweighed our budget, and in the end, many of them just did not make sense from a cost-benefit standpoint. So we're back before you today with a revised design that we believe carries forward some of the best design ideas from what you saw last January, but now is a project that is more in keeping with the long-range goals that we have for the Alex Theater. Our primary goal with this design is to present a more elegant and inviting entryway between Brand Boulevard and the Alex Theater that complements the unique architecture of the iconic marquee and the towering front facade. We wanted to keep the design simple. We wanted to have low-maintenance plantings. We wanted to eliminate the perceived barrier that's presented by the front gate. We wanted to provide a place for patrons to sit while waiting to enter the theater, and we wanted to add a splash of color to the forecourt. Glendale Arts and the Alex Theater Committee believe that Christopher Smith and Amy Corn have accomplished this with their design. We think that you will agree with us, and we hope that you do. And with that, I'll turn it back to Jay. Thank you.
And coming back to me, Christopher Smith and Amy Corn, the designers for the project, are both here to discuss various components of the project, and we'll be running through a series of slides.
All right, thank you, Jay. And also to the commission. I know everybody's been working hard on the Alex Theater for a long time, and I thank you for all of your hard work along the way.
Let us know which firms you represent, since I forgot to do that.
Thank you. Christopher Smith, we're preservation architects, planners and conservators. Our firm is Architectural Resources Group. We're in Pasadena, headquartered in San Francisco, and we've been practicing historic preservation architecture for the last 30 years. With me tonight is Amy Corn. She's a design principal with Corn Randolph Landscape Architects. So a lot of work has been done since we last met a year ago, as Barry alluded to. And we tried to revise this kind of scaled-back design of the forecourt, but certainly not taking away the patron experience and the design energy that we brought into the original project. We've been working with the city's budget along the way, and we've also been working as a very strong team, I believe, in balancing code and regulatory issues with the fire department and building and safety, which has partially been influenced to the design that you'll see tonight. We've continued to bring in and balance the influences... Next slide, Jay. Oh, sorry. We've continued to bring in and balance the influences of the Egyptian and classical 1920s theater and forecourt features, and balance it with the glamour and design elements of the modern 1940s S. Charles Lee era, including forms, colors, and materials. The revised project presented tonight deals more with the challenges of working with the existing forecourt and its existing features. For instance, the existing concrete paving and storage and concession rooms. In our initial design, we had proposed to remove the sloped forecourt paving and level it out and create a room-within-a-room effect for the patron experience. Second, we've looked at what's easily removed or replaced, like planting and site furniture elements as well. And I thought it would be, Amy is going to get into the design in more detail shortly, but I thought it would be sort of good to go through what the differences were between the design we showed you a year ago and tonight, just to kind of give you a summary. I know you have a memorandum on that as well. So I'll kind of go from the good news, the bad news, up to the good news a little bit. The ADA ticket window that was in the original design will be part of a later project. We had originally proposed to construct two new obelisks matching the existing ones that has been removed. No new water feature at this time, no shade device, no mounted heating devices. These are some of the issues that the fire department had, which we may be able to work out at a later date, but for this project, it's out of the scope of work. We're going to keep the existing slope concrete floor slab shown previously as to be leveled out, as I just mentioned. We'll remove outer sections of the existing paving, replace it with new colored concrete, and also restain areas of the existing concrete slab. We have deleted the perimeter seat walls and ramps, if you can remember back to that element of the project as well. We are, though, the seat walls are going away. We think we have a really new innovative feature. We're calling them the Cypress Lounge seating areas, and Amy will describe those more, but they will be, they will have a large urn in the center with a Cypress plant, and they will be uplit, and I think they'll be quite beautiful. We'll also be keeping the existing concession and storage walls along the perimeter walls. They will all receive new paint and new vining material as well, and they'll be infilled in certain areas to create a potential donor wall area for the future. We'll be adding new cocktail counters at the north and south concession walls. And we will still provide the theater with uplighting, forecourt area lighting, in addition to new planting and irrigation, and paint the entire forecourt, all of the interior-facing walls, doors, and other features that face the forecourt. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Amy Corn to describe our project in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. It's wonderful to be back in front of you tonight. You know, as a designer, it's always a challenge when you feel you have a really fabulous design, and you've worked hard on it, and you understand the meaning of it, and you think it's of incredible value. So when we began to embark on this redesign, we were really challenged. And that challenge became a strength. What it enabled us to do was look deeply into what the core design strengths were so that we could carry those forward as design guidelines in this redesign. And there are really two major ideas. And one is that the space has a reason for being, that patrons are welcome there, and they feel it's a place that's comfortable and inviting. And two, that it both respects and aesthetically enhances. It respects both the theater architecture as well as the modern marquee, and aesthetically kind of brings the two together. What we see now currently, and you know the theater and you've seen existing photos, is sort of a disconnect between the two. So those were our major focuses. And before I get into presenting it to you, I feel as a team, well, we feel as a team, that what we've come together with really kind of achieves the same goals as before, but in a different way. So we'll take a look at this plan here. And what I'll do first is orient everybody. So this plan is oriented north. On the left, let's see if this will reach a little bit, my shaky pointer. On the left, we have the entrance off of Brand. Whoops.
Ooh.
Thank you.
Hold it.
So we have the entry off of Brand, which is the modern marquee here, and then the theater to the right, which is to the east. And this is the existing forecourt in between. On the north side here, we can see that curved concession building. Same on the south, that's symmetrical. And then the shaded areas that we're looking at are areas that we plan to demo. So the terrazzo paving will remain existing at the theater and at the entry, but these would be our demo areas. And what exists in those areas now is from the concession to the center, we're removing the paving but keeping the pitch and removing the palm trees and the planters, which are sort of a collection of different ideas. The paving, to kind of remind ourselves of what our grade condition is here, is that we go from, if we called it zero elevation here, we are three feet higher by the time we get to the theater. So, and it's very faint, so I'm going to kind of draw a line with the pointer, but this first section, we go up at a pretty good percent before needing a handrail. So it's a bit of a ramp. Then the middle section is much more level at a 2% to 3%, which is pretty comfortable. And then we ramp up again to the theater. So I'm going to take us into the design now, having reviewed that. So what we're looking at here is keeping, again, those concessions on the north and south side. And actually, on the north side, the concession is potentially a donor wall here. But what I want to bring us to is your experience when you enter through what will now be glass door system. So we'll be able to see through into the forecourt. And then we have a transition into paving. Now, we are leaving this middle stretch of paving, both the teal and this yellow mustard color. Both of those are meant to tie into the existing terrazzo paving. They will be a concrete solution. Where the concrete remains in the center, we are talking about using a very well-known concrete company that's been around for a while, Schofield. They know how to stain concrete, so we can bring it into the harmony. Even though there's an existing color to the concrete that's there now, it's an integral color concrete, we'll be able to stain over it and have that be an overlay on top without doing a float that would chip away. So we're actually dyeing that concrete. It's called lithochrome, and it's been pretty successful on a lot of projects. On the north and south side, where we see more the gray tone, that would be a new pour of concrete. So again, removing all those old elements up to the face of the concession buildings. And then to get to kind of the exciting element here that we think provides the reason for being in the space, you can see on both the north and south sides, rows of three, and those circle elements. Those are called the Cypress Lounge. They are seven feet in diameter. They are meant to be seat walls and circular lounges. They still have one element that we were all really, that we felt had strength in the design, large-sized urns with Cypress trees. Those were in the room-within-a-room concept, kind of identifying the space. Those are in the center of the lounges, and maybe it's good to take us to the elevations so we can get a sense of what those look like. So on the left, we are looking at the theater elevation, and we've critically placed those Cypress lounges slightly outside of the theater columns so that they can present themselves. The theater columns have a fluted detail to them, which we brought into the base of those Cypress lounges, which are seating elements. And the caps are then a concrete gold, which reads back to the paving and the terrazzo. The urns are a brushed bronze finish, which talk to the medallions on the theater elevation as well as these urns above. So again, trying to harmonize the two different characters of architecture. And you can see them here in the elevation. This is an elevation looking south. You can see the obelisk that exists today, and then the elevation of the concession area. So the concession area we're proposing, there's sort of a tired vine on it now. What we're recommending we do is remove that vine and the wooden trellis system, giving it a new paint tone. We actually have some of our material selections and colors here tonight that we can review with you. But we would give it a paint color. There was a historic report done of paints that should be used and tones, so we've looked at that and made recommendations per that report. But we would, we also recommend that we cover and allow a green vine to grow back over this, but one that can hang on to the wall and not need a lot of structural support. We're also removing existing planters in this area, which is just south of the theater elevations on the north and south sides of the space, with low planting and, again, a nice backdrop for the Cypress that you see traveling or that line themselves in the space. The seat wall is always 15 inches high on the short side and about 22 or 20 on the high side, as the grade travels down. So from any direction, it's meant to be comfortable to sit on. And then back to the plan, it's also critically placed that this opening, as well as allowing these columns to announce themselves architecturally, but that you have an ability to flow on the outside of them. So if many people were gathering in the interior, people can move around. And that's one of those great concepts from the first pass. The room-within-a-room had ramps up the sides and the ability to kind of mingle in the center. So by bringing those in a bit, we feel we've kind of kept that reason for being for patrons. They have a comfortable space to be, and circulation could occur outside of it.
Amy, one...
Yes?
You're forgetting my favorite feature.
Okay.
The fluting around the base of the Cypress lounges.
Yes, and I thought I mentioned that, but thank you for bringing it up. That base, and it's a bit hard here to see, and if you have it in your package, you can look more closely at the elevation, and I'll point to it here, but, God, I wish I had a steadier hand here. The base of these have a six-inch fluting. It's meant to mimic and not even scale down much from what the architectural columns are. And the color would be complementary. The color of the bases of the Cypress lounges also grow out of the lighter cream or whitish color of concrete here, that gray-white. And then the caps would be that gold tone. And actually, if you can see this here, what we're talking about in terms of the lighter color, this would be the green. And then we have that yellow sort of decorative carpet effect that brings you up to the theater that would be in this lighter gold tone. So we're not trying to match the color of the terrazzo. We're muted in color and a little softer in texture, too, a little more monochromatic. The finish, this is the bronze finish. It's a fiberglass pot that we're proposing for the urn, same company that we came to you with before. And that would be plumbed and irrigated, and these Cypress would also be uplit. So there would be some wonderful drama to that as well. We're also looking at rope, not rope lighting in the sense of theater rope lighting, but possibly fiber optic lighting at the base of the Cypress lounge lifted off the paving. So there's just a soft glow. So we've got kind of the columnar lighting of the Cypress that mimics or brings out the theater, and the rope lighting, we feel, kind of pays a little attention to the neon lighting that we see on the marquee. So always trying to bring those two ideas together in harmony. This is a sketch looking towards Brand from inside the forecourt. We've actually shown the Alex Theater logo for now on the glass so that you would understand that they are glass doors there, but it still would be transparent. So again, trying to look at a different solution than the heavy iron gate, something more transparent and welcoming. Then on this board, which I think is also part of your package, we've looked at, again, some of, whoops, some of these colors of concrete. So this is our existing column. I'm glad we can see this here. So the base of the Cypress lounge would be fluted. The cap would be yellow, so we're almost turning it upside down a bit. And then the paving colors are in this family. This is another project. It's here for reference. This block on the lower right is all the plant material that we're proposing for the project. Every species is noted here. So we can see the vine, the creeping fig, the variety of Cypress, angel wing jasmine. We can actually see the urn. This would be the urn. It's a little narrow here. It'd be a bit wider. But that's the character together on this board. And I believe that's it. Questions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Platchett, should we have questions?
If you have any questions for the design team, Shire.
Any questions, commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Vidor.
Hi, thank you very much. Just a couple questions about the Cypress lounge. Is there a picture, or can you better describe for me exactly what the Cypress lounge is? Is it the conglomeration of all of those elements, including the urns, or is it one module? And what does the module look like? Lounge means there's a seating arrangement around the urn?
Yes.
And it's of a certain width and depth to accommodate individuals to hang out?
Yes.
And so, so that's one question. What does that look like? How high is the seating? And then what does the line of sight look like? You know, Cypress, they're really beautiful, but the ones near my house, they're really tall, and when the winds go, they go pretty crazy. So what is the plan on the type of Cypress and how, what is the line of sight as you walk in toward the theater going to look like with those Cypress?
Those are great questions, and I can answer those. So I will describe to you the form of the Cypress lounge. This is on that, there is a grade change to this project. So if you consider the theater being the high side here, first of all, they are circular. They're seven feet, four inches in diameter. The low side is always 15 inches high, which in an architectural sense is as low as you want to go for a seat height. When the grade falls away in all three conditions, we are at about 18 to 19. Again, just a little bit taller, but still acceptable as a comfortable seating height. That's your typical chair elevation. When you come in from that diameter, you've got two feet before it goes up. It lifts up in a nice kind of rolled detail. It rolls up, and then it holds up the urn. And that lift I'm describing is six inches. So it just sits up above the seat height. The urn itself, and I wish these were in closer so you can get a feel for what I'm discussing, but the widest width of the urn is inside the seating area, so you wouldn't have an urn at the back of your head, you know, to comfortable... So you wouldn't have an urn at the back of your head, you know, to comfortable seat height. It's not in the way. It's not overcrowding it. The base of it is that fluted look of the columns for about 12 inches on the low side and it would be poured, one solid concrete pour with form work around it to give it that detail. And then there would be a custom made cap. We're suggesting a company that has done this for us before. They would bring out the cap, fit it to the top. So it's just a different tone, but still concrete. And we think that detail would be beautiful. The urn then sits on that cap. There is plumbing for lighting and irrigation. And the Cypress variety is stricta. It's the most narrow variety that there is. It's kept much better. And in the elevation, I've drawn, I've drawn the Cypress to about 18 feet tall and three, two and a half to three feet wide, which is pretty much its ultimate size and could be maintained as that. So it's been critically thought out in terms of how its presentation and elevation, the urns are slightly outside of the center of the columns, which you can see on the left. We did not want these to block that as an architectural feature. They're meant to frame it. And when you're in the space, they'll feel more parted. Here, it's a flattened drawing.
And on the north and south, the remaining dimension is a dimension that the fire department was comfortable with for egress issues.
Which is 16 feet between.
So we're held.
Yeah, the dimension here, I believe, is 16 feet. There's about six feet or so on this side so that people could move through between that last Cypress lounge on the west between the concessions.
And the urn is a flat finish? I can't, I can't see the.
Yeah, it's like, it's a brush finish. We had several, actually, the middle row was, were different options when we first came to you. We thought maybe a gloss or a color that felt too contemporary. And again, we think it should be married with the 20s architecture. So the one on the right is what we're looking at, which is more flecked, more brushed, more bronze looking. You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. Maybe you mentioned it before. Why wasn't there any water element? Is it a budget issue or?
It's primarily budget issue.
And your report says in your plan says frameless doors, but on the, that elevation you've drawn, it has frames. I guess you can't do.
It actually just has a top rail and a bottom rail, which is acting as a kick plate, but it'll be completely frameless.
You have them in between each double door.
Those are the edges of the glass of each door.
Right.
They're going to be herculite type doors that are fully graced.
With panic hardware.
Now, maybe it's too early to ask this question and you already answered in the door book. Which donor designer are you using? Because you have two on this.
Yes, those are suggestions for now, so it is a bit early. We haven't designed what that looks like.
The donor wall's not part of the project you're reviewing, but they've identified a location where they're infilling one of the, the storage area, I believe.
That's only on one side.
On the north side.
So one of them, we did at the Conservatory of Flowers in San Francisco that had more of an organic effect and the other one is more of a slick, modern design. So we're just showing the range of design elements that could be incorporated into the donor wall.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Could I ask my question?
Thank you. I have one speaker on this side and I want to open the public portion of this hearing, Mr. Mike Mohell.
Good evening, Commissioners again. My name is Mike Mohell. I was just counting how many years I've lived in the city of Glendale. It's about 60 years. And I've been a homeowner for 32. I've been to all the schools of Glendale. I remember when the Glendale purchased the, from the Mann Theater, the Alex Theater. As a teenager, I used to smoke upstairs in the balcony. So it is historic and tonight we're going to change it for historic reasons. Why? Will this improve the attendance at the Alex Theater? The city right now, my taxes pay approximately $500,000 a year to subsidize the Alex Theater. And it's been doing that for 30 years. Now, I'm not a mathematician, but at $500,000 a year times 30 years is how much? A few million dollars, right? Thank you. And yet, we're going to go ahead and spend another several thousand dollars. And what's the guarantee it's going to improve the attendance at the Alex Theater? It looks good and feels good. I have a brand new jacket, but I still look the same. I'm still historic. Got a brand new jacket and a new shirt. That's what we've done tonight. Put on new clothing. The issue is not the appearance of the Alex, it's the attendance. What can we do to improve the attendance? What if we enlarged the stage at the Alex so we can bring in large musical groups like South Pacific or any of those other groups that bring in lots of people? Right now, all we're bringing in is not much. What I'd like to do is see our, my tax dollars, our tax dollars, do something that will improve the attendance. Having a pretty front does not improve the attendance at the Alex Theater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohell. Anyone else who wants to speak? Please fill out a form later.
Where do I get the form?
In front. That's okay. Go ahead and speak and you can fill it out later.
My name is Bill Geist and I've been a resident of Glendale since 1956. I was actually in the, a part in the reopening of the Glendale, the rededication of the Alex Theater. I did the electrical power and lighting and related things out in the foyer that you're discussing now. I was surprised at the time of the rededication, there were, I believe, eight columns out in the foyer or out in the outer area that you're discussing now. I believe two of those are now inside, but there's been no recognition of those. My impression was that they were an important part of the original design and I would hope that you'd give some consideration to those towers. I'm not an architect, so I don't have any idea as to what to do, but my feeling was that they were an important part of the original decorations. My impression of different events that I go to at the Alex Theater is that they are always congested out in the area that you're discussing. And I think great emphasis should be made on, in quotation marks, being able to get a maximum crowd out there before the doors open. Again, I'm not an architect. I'm not talking from that standpoint, but just a casual observer of the Alex Theater. And I think it's very important that we preserve and upgrade the Alex. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just to clarify about the columns in the forecourt, those were actually light torcher kind of lamps that were installed during the 1990s. So they're not original features and they're, they're not going to remain, although there are two in the lobby as he mentioned.
Okay, we'll close the public portion. Start our deliberation. Anybody wants to start?
Well, I appreciate all the work that they have gone to, to do what our, what we've suggested for them to do. I do like the glass doors as far as kind of shutting it off from the outside world and making it a place where you're, you're really in the Alex itself. I do like the design that they've, they've done. It seems like everything that we asked them to do, excuse me, is, they brought forward. I like the urns and the fact that they're not in the line of sight of the columns itself. And I think it's a good plan.
I think value engineering is always a challenging place for the designers. So I think overall, you guys have done a really good job with keeping the intent and the focus meshing with, you know, the new renovations with the existing historical features. Initially, I had concerns about the pattern of the, of the floor, the stained concrete. Can we go to that slide, Jay?
Sure.
However, it's growing on me, I must say. But just how it carves back around each planter. Initially, I had thought, should it really be, you know, kind of straight through and kind of mimic that red carpet effect rather than kind of be sawtooth or like a puzzle piece there where it meets the, what you were calling the Cypress lounges? But that's very minor. Like I say, I think it's kind of growing on me, so I don't. Objections to the plan.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you very much. I know there was a very long discussion a year ago about it and I think this is cleaner than the other one. And I, you know, have to comment on the, the gentleman who just spoke and the importance of, you know, having a very welcoming and usable accommodating space in the forecourt is really a critical aspect of the Alex Theater. And so it's important that we get on with this, with this upgrade. So I'm, I'm going for it. I have to admit, I have a little, because the plans don't totally speak to me as to how it's going to look in three dimensions, I'm having a little trouble picturing, you know, whether or not this is, you know, beautiful and spacious looking and people will pour in or whether it's a little tight. But given the dimensions, you know, and the amount of space between that seven foot lounge thing and the walls, it appears as though it'll work well. So I'm, I'm hoping that my judgment is right there. But I think that, that it's a really nice plan and it's been cleaned up and simplified beautifully. You have three sets of door, double doors here? Four sets of double doors. And so we have no issues with, they're going to be open and people are going to like walk in and open the door and it'll be opening and closing as people walk in? Is that how that works during the in flood of people into the forecourt?
The doors will stand in the open position.
They'll stand in the open position and so it'll be essentially like, the whole thing will be open.
Great.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. I'm satisfied.
Thank you. I don't want to repeat what my colleague said. I do agree that the plan has been simplified and I like the way it's laid out, especially the locations of the Cypress tree. And I do agree with the architect that the Cypress trees are limited in height because I have them in my backyard. They don't grow that quick, you know? And, and I fully support this. Anything we do to the Alex, I think it's great help. Now, whether this is economically the right direction to bring more attendance to the Alex, it's not under our preview. Our preview is to enhance the courtyard and make it more usable. With that, I'll take a motion. Thank you. Anybody wants to make a motion?
I move to approve the plan as presented.
I second. Go please.
Sir Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Shire. Yes, Commissioner Riddor.
Yes.
Chairperson.
Coming soon, a beautiful new forecourt at the Alex Theater.
Hope we'll do it this time. Item? Next item, please. It's all business. Item B, 1459 Mountain Street, return for redesign, proposed new single family home in Royal Boulevard Historic District. I'll go to staff.
Good evening, Chairman Mardian and Commissioners. This item was last reviewed by the Commission on December 13, 2010. After consideration of the project, the Commission voted to have the project returned for redesign with a number of specific conditions as well as staff comments and, and conditions. The applicant has made the necessary changes and is submitting the project for final review. Just as a recap, the project is located 1459 East Mountain Street, located within the Royal Boulevard Historic District. The subject site is a corner lot mounted by Mountain Street and Royal Boulevard. And due to its location, the site is considered to be a gateway into the district. The property was developed in 1955 after the period of significance for this district. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing one-story ranch-style house that sits towards the rear of the property at this, at this time and replace it with a two-story contemporary interpretation of the French eclectic architectural style residence. The adjoining properties to the north and west are both higher than the, the subject property. Do. The lot, due to its unique lot, lot shape and topography, the, the lot slopes upward from both streets. Also, a important feature of this property is the perimeter, which contains existing, retaining walls as well as tall hedges that pretty much shield the existing property from view, from, from the public right of way. Per the Commission conditions, one of the bigger changes is to the front yard setback, both along Royal Boulevard and Mountain Street. The Commission, the Commission requests that these setback distances be provided at 20 feet to ensure consistency with the averages in the district. As shown, the setback along Royal Boulevard will be 20 feet. And the proposed setback along East Mountain Street is 17 feet, point three, 17.34 feet at the southernmost corner of the garage and to 25 feet at the northern lead corner. So.
Forward. That point does I go around in the center? Sorry.
This is what, at this point right here, this is 17 feet, point, 17.34 feet away from the property line along Mountain Street. And at this corner, it is 25 feet away. So the average along that elevation is actually 21 feet. This, from the perspective of the applicant, is a compromise in what the Commission requested The residence will be designed as two radiating wings coming off the central building form, which are these wings here. The existing, existing building is located pretty much in this area. There's an existing mature oak tree at this location. So the new project will essentially remain in the same location with the exception of the two wings coming out towards both streets. The garage will be underneath the main residential living areas and will be tucked into the hillside. Due to design changes, the proposed project will also be slightly smaller than the previous project. This design is supposed to be 3,306 square feet, about 19 square feet less than the previous design. The three car garage will also be reduced in size at 785 square feet. Again, the home is designed in the contemporary style, contemporary interpretation of the French eclectic architecture. Again, this, this is a floor plan that clearly shows the two, two wings. And will feature tile, tile roof, steel trowel stucco finish, stone veneer at the base of the building and wood segmented and recessed windows. The chimney will be also clad in steel trowel stucco finish per the Commission condition. The elevation drawing also reflects. The elevation drawing also reflects an hierarchy in the sizes of the wall fixtures, the wall sconces on the exterior. As you can see on the elevation, at the front entry, the sconces are of a larger size, while the other sconces flanking the garage doors, as well as some windows, are smaller in proportion. The tread and rises for the stairs will be finished with the same stone veneer proposed for the base of the building. The covered entry was made narrower and lower than the previous design. The applicant has reduced two feet in the entry's width and one foot in its height, while the doors also have been reduced in its width and height to five feet by seven. The railings for the balconies and stairs have been identified and do not appear to be ornate in their design. I have the sample material board posted on the site there, but it's also shown on the elevation, clearly reflecting the chosen design. There it is right there. The Commission requested for the design of the columns of the covered patio to be simplified. However, these features and columns have been eliminated altogether under the current proposal. This area will be enclosed as a sunroom instead. In talking with the architect, this change, while it was not requested, was due to the fact that because the building had to be set back further from Royal Boulevard, it reduces the floor area and also affects the functionality of that room. So, in that case, the property owner requested that that area be enclosed as a sunroom instead. Other changes include the removal of wood shutters around the windows, the design of the garage doors and the entry doors. A bay window along Mountain Street elevation has been added in the bathroom. And the addition of a second balcony above the garage. In the previous design, there was only two balcony, one balcony, which was larger in size. However, that has been broken up into two balconies there. And other changes include simplification of the building form at the rear. Previously, there used to be a drop-out at the rear of the building that has been simplified as a straight line for that wall. And this is the bay window that is new to this design. Previously, this was just a straight line. And also, there have been a number of changes to, minor changes to the roof style, roof design. And that's... Again, this is added. This roof design is added, as well as the design in this area. Overall, the changes do not appear to compromise the design aesthetic of this project. And that concludes staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Radler. Any questions before we go to the applicant?
Mr. Duong, could you reiterate staff's recommendation regarding the project?
Yes, thank you for...
Thank you. Staff recommends this project with appropriate conditions.
Do you want to go over all the conditions, or you want to...
The conditions are the same as the ones we proposed at the previous meeting, which were...
Want me to read those?
Simplify. Foam moldings and columns shall not be used or incorporated into any aspect of the project. Now, again, these conditions, while the applicant is not proposing to use any of these items, we just want to make sure that they do not come up in the futures in the course of the plant checking of the project. All window and door openings shall be recessed and provided with wood seals and trim. Vinyl windows or windows with internal mountains shall not be used. Architectural details such as railings, sconces, entrances, et cetera, shall not be overly ornate, and segmented wood windows shall be used.
The 12 other conditions that the Commission had requested, Mr. Duong presented in his discussion of it, kind of following in order with those. And staff believes that all of those were successfully met with the new design.
Although, I forgot to add that the color of the resident has been changed dramatically from what you saw previously as the yellow... Yes, as sort of a bright yellow. Now, it's a beige color, which the applicant is calling shop lease, I believe.
The one condition we're not sure if it was met is the clear and easy-to-read site plan. We hope that you were able to figure out what you had. If you look at it, it does indicate what was there and what's coming, but it might have been a little harder than you were hoping for, so...
Oh, I had one question, Mr. Duong. Does the garage meet the minimum? At least the two-car, larger garage, the two-car garage? Because I know you're allowing compact for one of them, correct?
This project would require a three-car garage, but this is an option that the owner elected to have.
Yeah, but don't we need to make that two-car garage meet the standard? I think it's a foot off or so. If you look at Sheet A4. Do you have a slide there?
I see that the depth is 22 feet 7 inches, which is...
That's at that separation, how about where the building...
And the interior clearance is 30 feet, the width, which is the minimum.
As part of our review process, we'll make sure that it meets code. And if there's any substantial change, we would have to bring it back to the Commission, but we think it's pretty close at this point if it doesn't already meet it, so... One of your conditions, if you choose to put any conditions on this, would be that staff verify that the garage meets code as a condition of approval.
Another question, Mr. Duong. What's the material? It looks like there's a lot of concrete in this driveway.
I'm not sure if that's just a way of representing the project in a perspective, but I don't believe that this project would introduce that much concrete.
And the zoning code, or the code requires that there be decorative paving at the driveway?
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Dora.
Actually, I just want to gripe a little bit about the renderings that are attached, not the first blueprint, because there is a key, and the key doesn't match what's in the drawing. I think it's the old key. And the key isn't connected to anything in the drawing, so it's really hard to understand what's going on. And also, because there was a change in that original open area, which is very, I believe, very visible, because it's where the street, Mountain and Royal, kind of, there's a chevron there, and that redesigned area faces out kind of onto both sides of the street. And it would have really been nice to get a rendering, you know, not that kind of a drawing, but an actual rendering of what that new section that they've enclosed is going to look like. And maybe I missed it, but I don't see it. I see it in profile, but I don't really see what it looks like.
Well, we do have this. This elevation shows the new sunroom area over to the right. Royal Boulevard is over here.
Okay.
And this is the new sunroom, which was dramatically pulled back into the body of the house from the previous...
The middle elevation shows that other side.
Yeah, this is the far side. From Royal Boulevard, you'd be looking, I believe, toward this kind of end of it.
Okay.
See that here? Actually, you'd be looking at the right side of it.
And the chimney is a working chimney? That is functional, right?
It's a gas fireplace.
Okay.
It's a chimney shroud. The Commission asked for a decorative chimney to surround the metal vent.
But then we decided we didn't want it to be something that was just put there for ornamentation.
Yeah, there'll be actual heat coming out of it.
Okay.
But not smoke.
All right.
There's no cap.
Okay.
You don't need a, there's no need for spark arrest or any other cap there?
Sometimes they do have some.
Yeah, the top of the sheet metal vent will be hidden within the decorative chimney surround.
Okay. Any other questions? No? I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't know who wants, I think I have one speaker on the applicant part, Mr. Franco Noravien, the architect and applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Franco Noravien, 409 West Broadway, Glenelle, California 91204. I'm the architect on the project. With me, I have, last time you had asked for more specifics on some of the materials. So, I have a booklet I prepared, and I also have a sample of the stone, if you would like to. Basically, the main change, Rader already went over it, the pushing it back from both Royal and Mountain Streets. And I'd like you to keep in mind that when we're talking about setbacks and we're comparing this to some of the other structures on Royal and Mountain, most of them are rectangular buildings and parallel with the street here, even though we have 20 and on the other side 17. We're only, that's the minimum point. You know, on Mountain, we're 17.3 only at one single point, and then it moves away. So, if you average it out, just in that wing, we have 21. And on Royal, I kept it at 20. And the section that's 20 feet is only about eight feet wide. The rest of the building goes away. And by the way, that was accomplished by changing the angle of the wings, pushing it back and changing the angle. And what happened is with the columns, I got the feeling that you didn't like the column idea. So, the only way to completely get rid of the column was to create the sunroom, which is essentially the same thing. All the openings, the arches are the same. It's just they're going to have windows and doors instead of openings. So, that's with the sunroom. Some of the other minor changes, the shutters, I did eliminate them because as a result of that sunroom and the bay window, a lot of the windows, you don't have the opportunity to have shutters. I'll be happy to put the shutters back in, if that's what you wish, but they won't all have shutters. So, I prefer if none of them have shutters than, you know, just a few shutters here and there. As far as the chimney, you asked about the chimney. The building code doesn't allow wood-burning gas, wood-burning fireplaces anymore. So, the fireplace that we will have to have by code is a gas fireplace, but it will have a flue, and that flue will go through the chimney that we have. Question about the garage. Since the house is less than 3,500 square feet, all it requires is a 20 by 20 clear space in the garage. So, the additional space we have that's 18, that's kind of a bonus. It's not required by code. So, we meet the minimum 20 by 20 requirement on the garage. I think that's about it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I have a question, Mr. Franco. Yet you say it's under 3,500, but I'm looking at this cover sheet here. It says 3,591, total floor area.
No, that's the floor area. What happens is the living area is 3,463. And then what happens is, since the garage area is more than 500, we have to apply the additional square footage from the garage as a floor area. But the floor area is not what triggers the garage requirement. The living area is what triggers the garage requirement.
Well, I'm always known that, I always knew that. 3,500 is accumulated floor area, and the excess of the garage area goes onto the calculation whether it triggers a three-car garage. Can you clarify for me what the requirement is? How do you interpret the floor area?
I think it's exactly as Mr. Noravien explained it, because once you, since, it's actually working in a way to discourage people from having large garages. So, it's supposed to be a disincentive. But if they do add the large garages, then we include it in the calculation. And that's what the architect said is, in fact, correct.
Yeah, but the proposed house assess 3,306 in this document, and the garage area is 785. If it's 450 permitted, correct, for a two-car garage?
500.
500. Then the excess goes to that number. So, we have 285. You're already over 3,500 square feet.
But that's the floor area. The code requirements for garage is for living area, not floor area.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we don't have an issue.
And again, as we discussed before, if the garage dimensions or code compliance are an issue, we can look at that at staff level as a condition to any approval you might give the project.
Okay.
Oh, and if I can mention one other thing. The, some of the products that I put in the booklet that I prepared, if we can have a little bit of a flexibility on like, that or similar, because like my client was just mentioning me, maybe he might not want to have glass on the front door. Maybe he might want to have the same shape, but without any glass. So, if we can have a little bit of flexibility on those items, that would be...
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience going through this historic project change. I wasn't sure what this was, but in the renderings, is this the concept for the door?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that would be a solid door, as my client was just saying.
Not the windows?
Without the windows, uh-huh.
No, so, but you're not, this is supposed to be stained glass?
No, no, well, I mean, that was one idea that I had. But what I'm saying is, we, my clients just told me that they prefer to have just solid wood.
Oh, good, okay. Because I was going to say...
In the rendering, it shows us the solid wood.
Yeah.
Correct.
Because you've got wrought iron that, you know, has curlicues in it, and, you know, that would be, I think, very distracting choice. And many of those doors, I mean, I don't know where they were going to source their doors from, but there are a tremendous number of doors around that look, you know, they just honestly don't look that good. So, then it becomes an issue of the quality, and what are we really approving here? And the solid door on the rendering looks very nice.
Okay, well, then we'll change that one to solid door.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Could you explain your reasoning for adding an additional balcony in the front, when before there was just one?
Well, two reasons. Because of when I changed the geometry, the floor plan changed a little bit. By changing the wings, the angle of the wings, the floor plan changed a little bit. And then the balcony had to be symmetrical with the garage door that's below. And so, as a result of that, it got smaller. And since it got smaller, I thought it'd be good to have two, because it was a little too small. And then I added another French door in the master bedroom. If I take away the balcony, then that will just become a window, which it's, I mean, it's up to the Commission. If you prefer that, then... It was just an aesthetic choice. There was no, there's no reason why we have to have it, yeah?
How high is that wall next to the garage driveway?
You mean the retaining wall?
Yeah.
It'll be about three feet. We are actually lowering, I mentioned last time that we're keeping the...
The side, right?
Yeah, both sides.
This one too?
Yeah.
Well, it looks much higher. Look, how high is the garage door?
Yeah, in that rendering, it may be exaggerated a little bit, yeah. And then you're looking at the shadow also. So, the wall itself would, maybe four feet, but we're lowering the current driveway by three feet, dropping the floor by three feet, so...
Oh, that's a question I keep forgetting to ask, Mr. Franco. What's the eve detail? What's the eve detail?
It would have a precast stone molding, about a six-inch molding.
And how much does it stick out, a foot?
A foot, correct.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak on this matter? It's your time. Come on up and fill out a card because I don't see a card.
Later.
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Ute Baum and in looking at this rather palatial estate, I only have one comment to make. I just saw these renderings and elevations for the first time. It seems like this grandiose new home, it seems like the front entry and the stairways leading up to the front entry are rather skimpy and I just wondered if you had any thoughts on that. It doesn't seem to do this home justice. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public portion, the hearing portion of this item and pass it among us.
Just as a reminder, Chair Martin and members of the commission, you're looking at approving the project with staff conditions or as modified by the commission, approving a project with no commission, conditions or denying the approval. Those are ultimately the three choices you have in front of you as you sort of proceed. Should you choose to approve with conditions, we'd like to make sure we revisit that you're comfortable with the staff conditions and if you apply any other conditions.
Thank you. Who wants to start? Tyra, you wanna start?
I just have a couple of thoughts about the project. The one that concerns me most is I feel we were very generous at our last meeting when we talked about the setback and looked at the setback in the neighborhood and they ranged from 20 feet to 39 feet. We were pretty clear that really the minimum must be maintained so we don't set precedence in encroaching and not fitting along the remaining houses in the, in the area or in the district. So I think that's probably my biggest concern. Yes, I understand it's an average, I understand the architect's desire to offer a compromise, but I don't think we asked for one. So I think I'd like to see that be 20. The other thoughts are, you know, fairly minor, they're more kind of in the design. I think what I appreciated about the shutters being there and only one balcony is typically the houses in this neighborhood are more asymmetrical, differing design details, you know, one, one house may have a shutter on one window, iron on another. And so when you have it, you know, very repetitious and metrical, I think it's gonna stand out a little more as a new home rather than trying to kind of fit differing design elements. I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any more conditions to think about, but I guess I have a general kind of vague concern and it's only that the quality of the materials, including the all-important door and the windows, including articulations and fenestration, which I think is, is fine for such a big house, but the recessing is appropriate, that, you know, recessing can be, like some of the windows that are being popped into houses now technically are recessed, but maybe not deep enough. So I would ask that whoever makes the final decision, whether it be us or staff, is looking at that and making sure that it's, it's in the same general style as the neighborhood.
No, we have a mild obsession with windows here, so we'll look at those very carefully.
Yes, I think so. And for good reason. And then, other than that, I think the roof material, the concrete slate-like roof is nice. I'm glad that this house is not trying to be a, a new French eclectic house. I think the cleaner lines and the stonework and some of the detailing gives it a more, you know, it identifies itself as a, as a new house, which is okay by me. So, you know, I would go with the design as it is. Just making sure that the quality of the materials that frame the door and the windows are acceptable and we don't get that, I won't, I don't wanna say any, use any names, but I think we know what I'm talking about, that mm-mm-mm look.
Commissioner Vidor.
Home Depot.
I believe that is the intent of the precautionary conditions that rather align to...
Okay.
Is to ensure we have that quality that you're concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I agree with Commissioner Vidor concerning the windows themselves. But given the size of the lot and the way it is, I think that the architect and the people that are going to live in it, they've done a very good job of accomplishing what I think we set out the last time they came in. I think that this will be an asset to both Royal Boulevard and Mountain. I think the way that I look at it and the way it's set up with the wings, it's kind of welcoming for both Mountain Street and Royal Boulevard. So I'm, I'm pretty pleased with the whole way it's worked out.
My concern is the front setback on Mountain. I like to see it at 20. Will you with the Commissioner Shire that this needs to be 20? We were clear about our direction as far as the minimum should be 20. I understand averaging, but in that area, the building is getting too close to the street. I know there's hedges there, you won't see it, but again, those hedges may disappear at one time or another. I know you changed the design from the covered patio, but I thought it was a transparent material that didn't jump out at you on Mountain or on Royal, I should say, as much. But I'm willing to live with that. I think changing the angle helped you there. But going back to the shutters that Commissioner Shire said, I think we need to add something to it. I'm concerned with the Royal elevation, it's very simple, very, there's nothing to it. Size of the window arch is matching the other side. You understand there's hedges again on that side, you can't see it, but if you add a couple of shutters, maybe we'll give you a little more detailing to it. Now, how, where you put them, I'll leave it up to you, but I need you to introduce that because it's really, I know you're going to simplify, you're simplifying this as much as you can and I appreciate that, but again, it's dull. Nothing exciting, not as exciting as the front elevation. And I know, and one thing I wanna compliment, by shrinking this and changing the angle, you actually reduce the length of this building. Looks shorter, it looks more confined. And the only concern is I need to see some shutters? One question I had is why did the stone at the base continue at least on Royal? Is it because of the windows being so low, French door? The stonework in the front is only at the base in the front of Mountain, then it stops. Maybe that material change will also help that elevation. Other than that, I agree with my colleague's comments. If anybody else has other comments? The motion?
Over.
Go ahead, Mr. Dwan.
Before you take the motion and the vote, I'd like, staff like, would like to go over the comments that we heard so that staff is completely clear on the direction that the commission would like to see this project proceed towards. We heard that there was concern still about the setback distance of 20 feet along Mountain Street and heard a couple of comments concerning that it needs to be 20 feet, not 17.34 feet as proposed by the applicant at the closest point. And the other comments concerns the shutters or the lack thereof, that the shutters are needed to help balance some of the simplicities on, on the revised design and that would also bring the project into more consistent with other homes in the neighborhood and that it will create some asymmetry in its appearance. And we also heard that the quality of the doors, windows, and in general, all the exterior cladding materials need to be of the highest quality. And the recessed windows needs to be the appropriate depth that are found in the neighborhood. And the stone base needs to continue along the Royal Boulevard elevation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, well, rather, has enumerated all the comments that the commission, all the commissioners made. If any of those are important enough to the commission as a whole, that they need to be addressed and the project should, when you approve the project, those need to be added to the conditions that staff has already proposed. For example, the shutters or the 20-foot setback. And I, or some of these other issues. So I feel reasonably confident we could probably work those issues out at a staff level if you choose to approve. Most part, they seem pretty straight.
And if I could just add, based on your concerns about the setback, to explain why staff was supporting a setback that didn't meet necessarily to the, to the exact number, the, the standard setback in the neighborhood. As you remember, and you've seen, this is kind of an unusual site with an unusual geometry of the, of the proposed house. And we agree that in a historic district, there are very few issues more important than maintaining regular setbacks and kind of a uniformity of streetscape. But because this is a house with this unusual condition and that the facade that will be approaching the 17.34 foot setback is on an angle, the actual impact of that is very different when it angles away from the viewer from the street than it would be if it were kind of a wall perpendicular or, I mean, parallel to the viewer at the street. And for that reason, looking at this averaging of numbers, which we wouldn't do in most situations, just so the commission understands, we did feel that the design solution was appropriate for this site.
Mr. Dwan, are you looking for a specific number on that recess for the windows?
No, I don't, I don't...
Set compatible to the neighborhood, but what's the neighborhood?
We'll be looking at the manufacturer's specifications for the windows that are being proposed. With windows like this, we always require a block frame window, which is the type of window that is naturally set into the window opening with, with a stone sill below it. So there'll naturally be a recess, it could be, it depends what you're counting it from. If you're counting it from the face of the house, it's gonna be possibly two inches of surround reveal before the actual window starts. It'll be a little more before the glass begins.
I just wanna make sure we have some recess.
Yeah, we have a lot of experience with making sure recessed windows look good.
In fact, our staff are training, our staff from other cities.
All right. Okay then, thank you, Mr. Dwan. How do you feel about the setback? That you heard staff's approach.
My position.
All right.
The setback on Royal, which is the historic district frontage, is within the limits, it meets the minimum, but on the Mountain side, doesn't...
You're 2.66 inches, I'm sorry, 2.66 feet off. At the closest point.
Which may be a historic district.
Which may be.
Those are, that's the main condition actually, the other ones are minor conditions. Mr. Morgan, how do you feel about the setback?
I think that what they have right now is adequate. I'm going with what staff says.
Okay.
It's a tie.
It's gonna be a tie, I'm sorry, on the, on the setback. I don't know who's gonna give in, but I strongly feel that, I mean, 20 is very minimal in that neighborhood. I mean, if you look at across the street, especially on Mountain, setbacks are 25, 30 feet. Now, Mountain, yeah?
We know the, we took, we had the district to take, what, what is the story on Mountain? Is it...
It says the range of properties within 300 feet range from 20 to 39, so almost double the setback we're allowing as a minimum. That's why I feel it's critical to stick to at least the minimum.
Okay, so Mountain is inclu, oh, I didn't realize that, Mountain is included...
You looked at the radius.
In the range of setbacks that you quoted in the report. Yeah, I could figure for them.
Can I, is it okay to open public? I think the applicant has a comment to make.
Yes, you can reopen.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Dwan, go ahead and say what you have to say then.
What, I wanna make clarification about the setbacks along Mountain Street because Mountain is the dividing line between two zones. Properties on the south side of Mountains are Zone R1, which has a longer front yard setback at 25 feet. And the properties on the north side of Mountains are Zone R1R, which is the hillside zone. Therefore, the setback there per code is 15 feet minimum. So, yes.
Per existing condition.
Per code, correct. So if you're considering the properties on the south side of Mountain as well, then you're looking at two different zones with two different requirements.
Thank you for that clarification, I think that was a good point you made. But in our last staff report and our design guidelines dictate that we, you know, maintain the historic setback. That's very clear. I don't wanna be stickler on this, but we're talking two and a half feet. Very easily achievable. But with that, I'm gonna let the applicant come up and say what I have to say and...
Mr. Chairman, you have reopened the public hearing.
I wanna open the public hearing again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Martin. I would have gladly have complied with your request, but the only problem was that if we do that, if I do go to 20 feet, the third car garage that we're talking about, that's it's already, I said it's kind of a bonus garage, but it's less than the minimum required, it will disappear. If I push it back any further, because I'm also dealing with the side yard setback, maintaining the side yard setback, if I go back any more than what I have, the, I won't be able to have a nine-foot door on the garage. So it will, it will just be a two-car garage with a storage space next door.
I think you can achieve it, I'm sorry if I'm interpreting, you can flip the stairs a little bit differently and because you have that storage area there or part next to the stairs.
Mm-hmm.
If you tweak that stairs a little bit, you can clear it.
Oh, but you were talking about moving the two-car garage.
I think it would probably be best if we not try to redesign the project while we're at an important condition, Mr. Noravian will have to resolve it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to let you know why I didn't do it. I didn't do it to be confrontational, I just, there was no other way.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. You know, we're getting our design guidelines tested today and the first one, so you'll have to be patient with us. Okay?
Yeah, 'cause I think we talked at length last meeting about this being our first and setting precedent. And if we wanna maintain range and allow the minimum, I think that's why we agreed that first condition in our last meeting. That we would allow it to go well under the average and hold to the minimum.
Let's take a motion, see where that leads us.
If I may, there was also, two commissioners expressed some interest in seeing the shutters returned, is that...
Yes, I think you stated that.
Returning the shutters and the 20-foot setback on Mountain are two additional conditions that these...
Yes.
Well, the 20-foot is an existing...
As well as the quality of the materials.
20-foot is an existing condition already written in, do we have to restate that that's a new condition?
At this point, yes, because you're reviewing a new proposal.
Okay. Then I'll take a motion with these conditions.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the project with the conditions of a 20-foot setback on both sides, Mountain and Royal, as well as adding some shutters for some interest and asymmetry on the Royal side for sure and Mountain at the architect's discretion.
Anyone say?
And we'll maintain the existing staff conditions regarding the quality of materials, particularly on the windows and doors.
Yes. Need a second? Pass the gavel and make second. Pass the gavel and make second.
We have a restate of what the zoning issues are, so I understand that. There was a reason why we accepted 17 whatever, and I didn't understand it.
Want to open the public hearing again?
Just one more time, please.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan and Commissioners. At the last meeting, the Commission discussed the setback distances that currently exist in the Royal Boulevard Historic District. And according to the neighborhood surveys that was provided by the applicant, the range of setback distances for these homes in the district only range from 20 feet to somewhere exceeding 30 feet in length.
So that range that you gave us was for the 30 homes in Royal Boulevard Historic District?
It's for the 300 linear feet.
300 feet.
The radius on each side of the properties.
All right, okay.
But if I recall, the Commission believed that the 20-foot minimum would be appropriate, even though it's not actually the average of the setback distance that was surveyed.
And what is less than 20 on the mountain side? What has less than a 20-foot setback?
This corner, at this, this is the extreme forward point of the house toward Mountain Street, this corner. And then it angles back away from the street. The street is over here. So the distance increases as the house moves from this point toward the back to over 20, 21 feet.
The corner at the back is at 25 feet away from --
25.
Are you asking if those current properties at least --
Yeah, I'm just saying.
There are none.
There are no properties within 300 feet or in that general area on both the Royal and the Mountain side that have a setback less than 20.
Yes, that is the case within the 300-foot study area.
Yes, there may be properties beyond the 300 surveyed area that have less than 20 feet.
There was a photograph of the next door. Can we bring that up?
I have photos in the PowerPoint.
And the other thing, do we have an aerial map on this?
Not in the PowerPoint, but --
Maybe that'll help justify the cause.
These are photos of the homes in the neighborhood.
Well, there's one next door that shows --
Yeah, but these are, we're talking about Mountain.
Yeah, I think we're discussing, I mean, there's two things at hand, really. One is precedent that we're setting versus the architect having a design challenge that he may need to overcome.
Are we setting a precedent for a historic district?
To answer the question of precedent, the Commission, as design review authority, has the ability to recognize specific site conditions that could allow things, as long as they're within code, that it could approve, even if it deviates somewhat from what's there. It would not be precedential to make this decision, but it would be binding if you do make it. And applicants will have to readjust the plan of the house to accommodate that. But each future case, we'll look at on the merits of that case.
Correct. I guess I'm feeling, is it okay for me to?
Go ahead.
I guess I'm feeling that this is a really unusual site and a really unusual footprint for a house. The whole thing is just unique, and we won't be seeing it that often. And the problem of straddling the house facing front and back two different zones, one is a historic preservation overlay zone and the other one is not, it may be at some time in the future, but it'll have its own issues and requirements that I would not like to cause a redesign for this. I think the house is, you know, with the conditions that we talked about in aesthetics, if this is not precedent-setting, it's almost like an exemption situation because of its uniqueness. So I'm feeling okay about it, even though it's not 20 feet.
I just want to bring something up, Mr. Vidor, but I want a clarification. Is this the next door, right immediate property? Or maybe the applicant entails 1443?
That's the next door property to the north.
That has more than 15-foot setback, more than 20 feet.
Storehouse.
That's the next door house.
And I don't think this is such a rare instance. We will see corner lots where we'll need to have setbacks potentially in many historic districts, especially as more come forward. So I don't think this is such a rare occasion that an exception is necessary.
But we need to come to some sort of a conclusion?
As quickly as we can, yes.
Yes.
Because I think our audience, this is the first time we had an audience like this. I'm amazed and privileged to see this, but we don't want to keep them waiting.
If I may remind you, we have a motion on --
On the floor.
On the floor from Commissioner Shire.
If I don't get a second, it dies.
Approve with conditions, putting the 20-foot setback on both Mountain and Royal, adding shutters at the architect's discretion, but with attention to Royal Boulevard, as well as the staff conditions written in the report.
Is there a second? Does anybody want to make another motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the project with the conditions already stated in the project plan and in addition, allow the addition of shutters where there are wide expanses of walls that where it looks too spare, shutters will fill in blank space.
With the exception of accepting the proposed setback or not?
Accepting the proposed setback. If it's not precedent-setting legally.
Well, the code is 15 feet for R1R. We're going back and forth now.
15 feet.
Right. So anybody wants a second?
I second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shire?
No.
Commissioner Vidor?
Yes.
And Chairperson Morgan?
No. I'm sorry, but I think it's not a matter of setting, I mean, I agree with setting precedent, but our design guidelines clearly state that we need to keep and maintain the average setback in the neighborhood.
But based on the architect's statement, if we consider what would happen if we did look for the larger setback, really what we're losing is the third garage. The applicants will still get a large master suite. There may be some other changes that could accommodate the reconfigured space in the living quarters. But the main change that the owners will experience is the loss of this third car garage, but perhaps an extra workshop area or storage space.
I think it's achievable, in my opinion, without destroying any of the design characters. I mean, we look at these sizes of these closets. I'm not going to question people closet sizes, but one closet size of one of the bedrooms. There is room to tweak this. I'm not going to be stickler on this. I mean, if we're not setting precedent, I'll change my vote, but I think we will be setting precedent, so.
If I may, Mr. Chair, if you would like to hold the decision as it is, that's completely up to the Commission. However, if another Commissioner would like to propose a motion to continue the item to a date uncertain until we have a fifth Commissioner, and we would then renotice that. At this point, the way it stands is that the applicant would be left with the option of either applying for a brand-new project or appealing it to the City Council.
Could you, one of you, advise, if this was a condition that we all talked about, discussed, and voted on and put onto this project, why are we re-discussing it today? And why is it back again forward when it was just that the architect decided not to adhere to that and present today?
That's a very, that's a fair question. The conditions that you put the first time around are not cumulative. Once the project is redesigned, you are actually allowed to revisit that and drop some conditions and add new conditions.
I see.
Okay.
Can we continue this till after the public general update meeting is?
Yeah, you can do that. Continue to the end of the meeting? Is that, you know, we asked the applicant if he's willing? Would the applicant mind if we deliberate this a little later in the meeting? Because we have an audience. We want to give you the benefit of that, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll continue this matter after the meeting. Does anyone want to take a recess or should we continue?
Let's continue.
Just continue.
We'll take a recess after the one short next item.
Okay. But before we start that other item, I'm sorry, Mr. Lucasio, I know you had you on the agenda five. Was that correct, oral communication?
No, it's for the final item.
For the final item? Thank you. Okay. All right. New business, number eight. Proposed North Cumberland Heights Historic District Review of Petition Requesting Historic Resource Survey. And I think this is just a --
This is a quick, a quick piece, and then we'll take a short break before we open up the exciting special meeting, so stay tuned. The excitement here, though, is that the North Cumberland Heights' proposed historic district has come forward with a petition requesting that the city conduct a historic resources survey for the district. And the petition arrived in our office within the three-month time limit mandated by the ordinance, and it also bears the signatures of more than enough property owners to meet our requirements. Specifically, we received signatures from the owners of 68 of the 179 properties in the district, which gives us 40, or I'm sorry, a 38% submission rate for the petition. The ordinance only requires 25% of the homes to, for us to move forward through the process. Based on this, and staff has reviewed the petition, there were a few signatures. The Commissioners have a set of the signatures. There are a few marked with a zero next to them. Those are signatures that were not counted because they didn't meet the standards of having all homeowners sign the petition. All of the signatures marked with the check mark actually count toward this, and our recommendation is that the Commission vote to move this process forward and to begin arranging for a historic resource survey, which will, in this case, be a survey update since the, we can reuse the Cumberland Heights survey in a way we did with the Art even Highlands survey.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. I have no one to speak on this item from as far as the public. I'll close the public hearing, and anybody has a comment, question, or a motion?
My move that we accept the, this is a correct motion, that we accept the petition and approve the conduct of the survey.
Forward, exactly.
Moving forward.
A second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shire?
Yes.
Commissioner Vidor?
Yes.
And Chairperson Morgan?
Yes. Okay. Recession, please.
And now we will take a short break. We have, we have a very interesting agenda coming up, so if everyone could be back in here just after, you know, seven or eight minutes after the hour. And we'll have everything set up and ready to roll.
Okay. Do I need to repeat what I said or?
No, paraphrase in one sentence.
So this is a special day for us, and to tell you the truth, I've been on the Commission for six years. I haven't seen an audience like this that comes to our Commission. And we're privileged to have you all here. And some of you were involved in the district ordinance and design guidelines from the beginning. And with that, I'm going to go with Mr. Hassan, the Director of Planning, to give us a little preview on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairmembers of the Commission. I just discovered tonight that I'm actually listed as the person to speak, but I'll be happy to do that. As you know, as of the beginning of this month, the City Council has merged the prior Department of Community Planning with the prior Department of Community Redevelopment and Housing, that includes redevelopment and housing, obviously, under one roof called the Community Development Department. And this is consistent with the City Council's policies to, that they have been devising over the past few years, that they want everything that's associated with neighborhood concerns and development processes under one roof, so that from the very beginning, prior to even an application being submitted, until after a project is built, we have one department that's responsible for overseeing the city's policies through the review process and afterwards if there are any code violations. So with this merge, the redevelopment in housing that tended to be away from the other parts of the planning practice have come under the same roof. Although we always work very closely with the previous department and we inform them of all of our concerns regarding neighborhood conservation and historic preservation in particular, but now we have a much more direct set of communication with all of our commercial areas that are under, that are subject to redevelopment and economic development. And with housing, we've always had and established a good relationship so that the housing projects, affordable housing projects would be, if they're historic, they would be responsive to the historic needs and also if they're new, that they're consistent with our neighborhood design guidelines. So this is just a new era. I don't think you'll see much of a difference in terms of what you will be facing, but we will have a much more direct input on historic preservation concerns in the commercial areas of downtown and San Fernando Road. We will be right at the table from the beginning with the concerns of the community and this Commission, as well as everything else that we have to balance. If you have any questions about that, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No. I'll go to the Urban Design Studio, Mr. Alan Longus.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Morgan, Chair. The Urban Design Studio exists within the Planning and Urban Design Division of the new department that Hassan outlined. And I think while the Commissioners and attendees of the Commission are very familiar with historic preservation issues that you take on, I think what you may not fully appreciate is that urban, or historic preservation is one aspect of what we consider through urban design. In addition to staffing, this Commission and advising you on all the preservation issues and now design review issues that you are facing, our staff, which consists of myself, Jay, and Stephanie Reich, as well as Mike Nielsen, we also advise the two design review boards on design review issues and the City Council when they are functioning as a design review body, principally as the redevelopment agency, sometimes as the housing authority. So the three staff are really involved, three or four staff are really involved in all design issues with all the different Commissions, assisting those Commissions as well as all the planning staff and redevelopment staff that work on those projects. So this is actually somewhat unusual if you look at other cities on the way they practice. I'll take our large neighbor, Los Angeles, as an example. Los Angeles has a separate urban design section, only one urban designer for all of Los Angeles. Glendale has the benefit of having two as well as Jay. And they are not set up integrated with their Office of Historic Preservation. In fact, we find that with a lot of other communities, that historic preservation is often sort of off onto its own. In Glendale, we've really integrated entirely into our design review and urban design section, which means, as Hassan said, every time we're looking at a new development project, historic preservation is part of the thought process as we look at projects. The other advantage is that allows not only preservation issues to come to the forefront as we're looking at new projects, but it also allows even design projects that are not involved with historic resource, but simply older buildings, often will get the benefit of some, I don't necessarily want to call it historic thinking, but simply the kind of eye that really appreciates old buildings and old, our traditional architectural styles. And sometimes architects get very excited about modern buildings, and we're not always trained how to look at older revival styles. And so we really rely on Jay's sort of eye of what is appropriate for a revival style on many, many occasions. And so we sometimes ask him to take off his preservation hat and think like an architect and a designer and just give us some advice on those projects. So the Urban Design Studio is very unusual if we look at other, others' communities as being, really including preservation as a kind of core component of how we think. And so there's a lot of other work that we do that is not always in front of the Commission, but is always informed in some fashion by thinking about older buildings and the importance of buildings, whether they're historic designated resources and require that level of protection or whether they are simply older buildings.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lomas. Now, we're going to introduce a special guest, Janet Hansen.
I'm going to take 30 seconds before I do that to let the commission and staff, as well as everyone in the room and watching know, that we have a group of, tomorrow's preservationists are here today. A group of USC preservation students are witnessing the fact that preservation is not always black and white. Preservation is not always easy, and we really have to come to decisions sometimes with competing viewpoints and different opinions from both the community and from preservation commissions themselves. So everyone, welcome here.
Do you want to stand up? They're shy.
So, but Janet Hansen is not shy, I don't think. Janet Hansen has one of the biggest, baddest jobs in preservation anywhere in America today. She is the Deputy Manager of the Los Angeles Office of Historic Resources. And as such, she is in charge of the biggest Historic Resource Survey, I believe, in American history, but she'll let us know about that. She came to Los Angeles from the city of Riverside, where she was a preservation officer for six years. She also sat on the Historic Preservation Commission in Redlands. So she's got a lot of experience she brought to this survey. And we asked her to come here tonight so that the commission and the citizens of Glendale could understand what's happening right next door in terms of preservation, and give us some ideas of how we might be able to approach surveys in the future. Janet Hansen.
Thank you, Mr. Jay.
Gee, I was kind of feeling a little burned out today. You know, you work hard and all that, but now I constantly reminded about how interesting this project is of my job, so now I feel re-energized.
Excellent.
Do you have the clicker?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Cut.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you so much for inviting me here tonight to talk. Can everybody hear me okay? I know there's been a little bit of a problem with not being able to hear people all that well. There we go. Survey LA is a project of the Office of Historic Resources, which is placed within the City Planning Department. And it's the first project in Los Angeles to systematically identify historic resources. There have been surveys in Los Angeles, larger surveys, that have resulted in historic preservation overlay zones, and certainly that have resulted in the designation of the almost 1,000 historic cultural monuments or city landmarks. We've also had large-scale surveys done by the Community Redevelopment Agency, and as you're probably aware, surveys that would be done for environmental compliance for SEQA and Section 106 projects. And as Jay suggested, as far as we can tell at this point in time, it is the largest, most ambitious survey project in the nation. It includes background research, field documentation, and research. So why are we doing this survey? We have this slide in here because oftentimes we're going to audiences that don't particularly want to do a survey, or they have some misconceptions about what surveys do. But we're speaking to the choir with this audience. Obviously, we're doing this to recognize architecture and cultural diversity. It's not just about architecture. Survey LA is also about the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. And in this context, it's really probably a good audience also to make the point that we're doing this really first and foremost in the Planning Department as the foundation for the city's historic preservation program. We can't really implement the ordinance. We can't include aspects of historic preservation in community plans or specific plans without having a good understanding of what we have in the city and what it is that we want to protect. And then, believe it or not, at the time that the survey started, which was a few years ago, only about 15% of Los Angeles had ever been surveyed. This is one of our favorite graphics. Everybody enjoys this map. One of the hugest challenges in doing a survey in Los Angeles is the sheer size of the city. 466 square miles and 880,000 legal parcels. And on here, you can see San Francisco, Milwaukee, Pittsburgh, Cleveland, St. Louis, Boston, Minneapolis, and is that Honolulu? Down there? No, Manhattan. See, I can't even see what I'm looking at. And, you know, there's lots of room to spare there. So you can imagine surveying something that is the size of this many major cities. And not only is it huge, but the range and complexity of the resources is vast. Just about every type of resource and every topic in history that you can think of is represented in Los Angeles' built environment. And one of the reasons that this project is even happening is the five-year feasibility study that was done by the Getty Conservation Institute. And this actually started about, I think about 2000 at this point in time. I was still at the city of Riverside at the time. And they did a feasibility study on not only best practices for how to do this project, but also potential funding for it, and providing the framework for how we're actually conducting it. So after this study, this booklet was published, which by the way is on our website, I'll give you a little bit later what the website is. The city entered into a $2.5 million grant with the Getty Foundation, which is the grant-making arm of the Getty. And we matching, or we're matching that dollar for dollar. Some of it we're getting by other grant monies, but some of it is mostly coming not from general funds. It's coming from what's called Construction Services Fund, which is a profits from the building permits of the city. So that's how we've been able to do the match without using general fund money. And in addition to the 2.5 million, we also continued to get technical and advisory support from the Getty Conservation Institute. They have field projects all over the world, and they've taken us on as one of their field projects. They've given us some money to do the citywide historic context statement, as well as developing the Survey LA website, and also for some of the programming that's taking place with the database we've designed to do this survey. So how will the survey data be used? Obviously, there are many reasons to use survey data, and I'm not going to elaborate on too many of these in the interest of time. But again, you know, this idea of integrating the survey into planning, and one of the ways that we're conducting this survey is by community plan area, which is proving to be actually a very, very effective way to conduct the surveys over time. So the timeline for this survey project, it started in 2006. And we've called the first phase the initiation phase. And during that time, we developed the tools and the methods to be able to actually go out and do the survey. Took us a little longer than we thought it would. We spent quite a few years putting together a community outreach program, a citywide historic context statement, and a custom survey database. And then we also tested these during pilot surveys. I'll talk really briefly about each of these in a minute. And then the implementation phase is what we're in right now, and that's 2010 to about 2012, probably more like 2013. And we're starting, we've started the field surveys in July of 2010. Our community outreach program is vast. We were lucky this year to receive a national APA award, or the National APA Award for Public Participation. So we're really proud of that. We spent quite a few years on various aspects of this project. And we do it as much to encourage public participation as we do to address misconceptions about survey work. A lot of people think that the survey is tantamount to designating properties. That's one of our mantras as we go about communities, is that we're collecting information, baseline information on what is significant. We are not designating properties as a result of this survey. Our outreach tools include the Survey LA website, www.surveyla.org. If you're interested in finding more about the project, there's a lot of information about how we started the project, about the Getty, and then we're following the progress of the field surveys. We have an active speakers bureau that we train every year. Have about 20, 25 people right now. I'm pretty much the staff of this project. This is not, there's not a huge bunch of people behind me in the planning department. So we really rely on the speakers bureau to go out and spread the word in the communities. We produce with the city's cable channel a Survey LA video that won a local Emmy Award a couple of years ago. We have multilingual brochures. Our materials are in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Korean. We have what's called the My Historic LA Program, which is an online and hard copy form that people can go either online or maybe collect these at meetings and fill out and tell us about resources that they think are important in their communities, and then we take that into account during the survey process. We also have a huge volunteer and intern program. We have over 200 volunteers working with us on Survey LA. So we realized from the start of this project, or at least I did from the first day I got there, you know, completely overwhelmed by the size of this survey, and realized that we had to come up with a methodology that really enabled us to do this with, I know $5 million seems like not a lot, but with 880,000 parcels and many, many years to do this, it doesn't actually turn out to be that much money per parcel. So we knew we had to develop a methodology that was not only consistent, but allowed us to do this with a finite amount of money and a defined timeframe. And the two major key elements of that are the citywide historic context statement and what we call our Field Guide Survey System. So our thinking forward, you know, we're trying to do efficient use of time in the field. We wanted a forward-thinking and replicable model nationwide, so this is something that any community can use. We're using both state and national standards for doing Historic Resources Surveys, which allows us to be replicable. And as I mentioned before, it relies on meaningful public participation and outreach to directly feed into the project. And then we wanted something that's expanded upon and added to over time. So the idea is not, we do this survey, Survey LA is over, now we're done. This will continue to go on. As time goes on, more contexts and themes will be added to the context statement, and properties will continue to be surveyed. So this is an ongoing project. The citywide historic context statement is a technical document that provides the foundation for the survey. And I think you've done some, are you citywide context, or you've done the mostly in the context of, of, okay. In a nutshell, it's, it's a, well, the technical document is very specific to the field of historic preservation. And it identifies themes that represent the history and development of the city or any city, and then it links those to extant historic resources or what are called property types. And by doing a context statement, you're providing a consistent framework for identifying and evaluating resources, particularly when you have a large number of surveyors out in the field. We're using what's called the multiple property approach to do this. And to give you an idea of how it works, say you're looking, if you're doing a traditional survey and you're just doing property by property, and you have a lot of craftsman houses in a neighborhood, you're going to end up with survey forms that talk about the arts and crafts movement over and over and over again. The multiple property approach, we'll talk about it one time. So you'll have a context on the arts and crafts movement, and then you'll have what are called eligibility standards that set up the physical and character-defining features and integrity thresholds that a property needs to have to be significant within that context. So it much streamlines the identification of properties, and it allows you to not only take properties in groups, to do national register nominations, which was why it was developed, but it's also a tool for taking multiple properties together to the city's Cultural Heritage Commission and do batch nominations to that register as well. The context statement has been in process for years. It's ongoing. It's not done. And it won't really be done because surveying is a very organic process where the survey itself really informs the context statement. So we expect this to be going on for the few years that the survey is going on. And we do have over 40 writers working with us on this. The context statement covers the entire city of Los Angeles. We often get a lot of questions. People think we're doing the county or, you know, other areas. And as we know, there are some artificial boundaries, in particular when you're dealing with context from one city to another. We're addressing resources from about 1865 going all the way up to 1980. And it's something that's developed for use by all departments and city agencies, so that whatever city agency is doing a survey, they're all using this consistent framework to look at and evaluate resources. We have nine major contexts. I actually have some copies of the outline, if you're interested. And all of them have multiple themes and subthemes. And cultural, ethnic, and gender topics are not treated separately. They're integrated into all of these other topics. We didn't want to tell separate stories. We wanted this to be one story. And it's applicable to other communities in the Los Angeles area. So there are probably a lot of themes that we're writing about that you can use similar information if you're working on contexts and themes here in Glendale. So the major contexts are Spanish and Mexican colonial-era settlement. We think we've probably found everything from that time period, so there's not going to be a lot of surveying those. And then we have pre-annexation communities of Los Angeles. And those are the nine communities that were actually incorporated cities before they were consolidated into Los Angeles. Residential development and suburbanization covers things like streetcar suburbanization, freeway suburbs, multifamily residential development, even ethnic enclaves. Commercial development, government and private institutional development, which covers anything from things like municipal government buildings to schools, to social clubs, and even things relating to the arts and culture. Industrial development, the entertainment industry, which of course isn't industrial, but we're looking at this more as, in addition to industrial properties associated with motion pictures, television, radio, also the entertainment culture. And then architecture and engineering, which is where all of the themes would go relating specifically to architecture, late 19th century. We have the arts and crafts movement. We have modernism, period revival, and then cultural landscapes. So real quickly, and I'll show you this because this context statement is actually translated into data fields and preloaded into our survey database, so that when surveyors are out in the field, they're not just doing a traditional, taking a picture and maybe taking notes for an architectural description. They're actually using this outline to decide why something is significant, you know, where does it fit categorically? So we have a context and themes, then we have the associated property types and subtypes with a description and significance. Eligibility standards, which are called registration requirements in the multiple property approach, but we didn't want to, again, give people the idea that we're designating. Registration implies designation, so we changed the name to eligibility standards. So you're looking at physical qualities, associative qualities, and then those aspects of integrity. So if you're looking at the arts and crafts movement, again, to take that example, your eligibility standards are going to be largely physical characteristics. If you're looking at the civil rights movement, this would be largely associative qualities associated with a property, not so much the building itself, but what happened there. And then we're evaluating properties for the national register, the California register, and then city criteria. And then we're assigning what's called California Historical Resource Status Codes. That's a system that's specific to the state of California. So quickly, our Field Guide Survey System, or the FIGS, as it is now affectionately known, is a custom GIS database that translates this historic context statement. So all of those points that you saw coming down are actually data fields. So someone would be standing in front of a craftsman house. They're going to select architecture and engineering. They're going to select the arts and crafts movement. They're going to select craftsman style. And then they'll get the associative qualities, so they can make the decision in the field whether or not this particular craftsman house is an exceptional example and meets criteria. So it's a written guide to train field surveyors. Because this approach is a little bit different, it uses standard methodology, but it's not a typical way of doing a field survey. We train our surveyors both in classroom and in the field. And we also train them in the use of the historic context statement, so everybody's applying it consistently. And the surveyors use tablet PCs in the field and digital cameras. This is what the FIGS application looks like. And one of the important aspects of this is all of the data that's preloaded. So in addition to preloading all the context statements, we have previous surveys preloaded. We have standard assessor information, like construction dates. We have tract maps. We even have annexation areas where they can turn a layer on and off if they're looking for something in pre-annexation. We have streetcar lines loaded in there. So if you have a resource that may be associated with streetcar development, you can actually turn that on and see that it is in the proximity. But, and then we have the state Historic Resources Inventory for Los Angeles preloaded. And probably one of the most important things is that community input. So those forms and anything we get from our My Historic LA program, we actually physically have a table that gets preloaded in there. So if someone is standing in front of a resource that may not be architecturally significant, they would generally walk by it. They're not going to stop and record something like that. This would be shaded. When they click on the parcel, the information will actually come in front of them in a narrative that says, "This was the site of," or "This was the home of." So otherwise, you know, it would be impossible to identify things that are not of architectural significance. And for surveyors to do that kind of parcel property-specific research in a city this size would literally take decades rather than a few years. I think I've mentioned all that. We are identifying both individual properties and historic districts. So we are looking for historic preservation overlay zones or national register districts. Another thing we've done uniquely for this is identify what we're calling planning areas. So if there's a particular geographic area that maybe on a property-by-property level doesn't rise to the level of being a historic district, but it has a real cohesive character and setbacks and street trees, we are identifying those as planning areas for purposes of doing the community plan, so that the planners know that these are areas that you might want to have an overlay, a community design overlay versus designating this as a historic preservation overlay zone. We are not surveying, resur surveying anything that's already designated. We just don't have the time to do that. We're also focusing only on resources which appear to be significant. Every single parcel in LA is being considered. They're walking or driving every single street, but they're only recording the ones that appear significant. So the obvious architectural significance is an easy one. That's why this public participation is so important, because we need to get the resources that are of cultural and social historical significance. So it relies very heavily on pre-field research. We're not doing the typical flowery architectural descriptions, which take a huge amount of time. It really doesn't add a lot of value to using a survey as a planning tool. It's something that can be done at the point of designation. So we're developing a system working with the State Office of Historic Preservation to do bullet point architectural descriptions. It also presents that information in a much more consistent manner that's actually easier for planners to use. Survey teams are out there in teams of two, and you can have more than one team working in an area at a time. All of the consultants making the decisions have to meet the professional qualification standards in historic preservation. But we do have a lot of volunteers and a lot of student interns from USC helping with the survey. So this has actually been really great since July of last year. We decided sort of a win-win for everyone is for the consultant teams to hire graduate students. There aren't a lot of jobs available right now, so they get this in. There aren't a lot of jobs available right now, so they get this invaluable experience working on Survey LA, and it makes the dollar stretch a little bit further with them working as interns for us. So it's been a really great, like I said, a win-win for everyone. We did a pilot survey program in several areas. Boyle Heights was one of those areas. There were two parts of the San Fernando Valley, and we also did some streetcar lines. Probably, the context statement was not that well-developed at the time, and probably the best information we got out of that was the survey, the database that we've designed, and really helping to perfect that. But we also figured out how long it was going to take surveyors to actually do this, so we were really surprised at how fast this works and how much you can get done in a short period of time. The first group one of the surveys, they did 100,000 parcels in about 12 weeks. This is our phasing plan. Unfortunately, there's green and yellow, and it all looks green, but as I mentioned before, this is paralleling the new community plans, kind of, sorta, with the city's budget. That whole schedule was sort of set out of whack, but we're sticking to our plan and we're doing it in the order that we had originally proposed to have them done. Really, the good thing is, we may actually come out ahead of the community plans, we may be done before they're starting, so. So this is year one, these are the three groups we're doing right now. Group one was the Sunland Tahunga area, which is that area up north. And then we did West Adams, Baldman Hills, La Merck Park, some really interesting, great areas in there, and a lot of historic districts. And we did the entire La Merck Park development as one huge historic district of, and I think they did that in just a couple of weeks, it was great. And then Hollywood, we did not do the Hollywood redevelopment, or the community redevelopment area of Hollywood that had just been done. We're starting group two, which is South LA and Southeast LA, next, actually, this month, tomorrow's February 1st, in February. And then group three will follow later this year, some interesting areas. What we tried to do in dividing this up was follow the community plan area, but also figure out what we thought the density of resources that would be recorded in each area. So the Sunland Tahunga area is certainly not as dense as something like Hollywood would be, so we're trying to figure out, you know, what the cost would be based on those factors. So if you would like more information about Survey LA, I'm it, so feel free to contact me. We also have fabulous young people working for us, interns, as I mentioned, and they have set up Facebook, Twitter, and a Survey LA blog, all of which are quite entertaining. The idea of the blog was to chronicle the survey over the next few years, so the person, the intern who started that, went out with the surveyors and talked about the neighborhoods and then, you know, the culture of doing surveys, you have to talk about the restaurants in the area and have pictures of great food and where you went to eat, so. Happy to answer any questions.
Hans and I had one question. How does this information eventually become related to ZEMUS or Navigate LA?
Yes, good question, yeah. The idea from the very start, and one of the main goals of the Getty in supporting this, was that all of this information is publicly accessible. So we have two plans. The first is to integrate it into ZEMUS, which you know, ZEMUS is a parcel-profile database. And so there would be information in there that is needed for that type of database. And we're working on, since we're just getting our first batch of survey data, that's the next step, is to work to get that. But first, we have to go through a public review process of the findings. We're actually going to have public hearings, which are going to be very interesting for people who don't want their properties on the list. So, you know, that's a new challenge that we're going to have to go through. But the other thing besides ZEMUS is, on our website, to have all of this searchable in a very interesting way. So if you look at the context statement, for example, you might say, "I want to see all of the houses designed by a particular architect just in the 1920s." And then that may lead you, if you're doing an African-American architect, to go into the context about African-American sites in Los Angeles, which may lead you to particular neighborhoods. So anything that is a field in our database, we would like this to be searchable by for all different types of reasons.
Thank you very much.
So both of those would be both in ZEMUS and on our website.
Thank you. Any questions to this?
All right.
Thank you very much for being here.
It's your turn next.
Thank you.
I think there's a lot for us to learn from what LA is doing, and I think it is the biggest, baddest project and job that's going in preservation right now. We are going to be the beneficiaries of their work at Glendale. The consultant we've chosen for the Rossmoyn district was, has been involved with the Survey LA project, and they're specifically going to be bringing in the residential and suburbanization context into the Royal Boulevard survey, so it's already benefiting Glendale.
Thank you. Paul, next?
For everyone who's here, the reason we chose to have this special meeting tonight was to allow you the opportunity to be here in the evening rather than during the afternoon when we usually meet, so that we can hear from you. And we're hoping, despite our late start and the long hearing items, that you'll be able to stick around because we are going to be taking comments from you at the end of the presentations. But we wanted to give the commissioners an opportunity to kind of share where we've been over the last year and what we've been doing as a commission and a department to work on preservation issues in Glendale. So we are calling this, if I can get this right, let's see, Glendale 2010, the year in historic preservation. And under your chairs, you have 3D glasses. So if you have a look at this, you'll really have an eye-popping experience. But the goal is to kind of just introduce you to what we've been doing. One of our commissioners will take a step backward in the past, because Mike Morgan is the historian on the commission, but we're going to start with Commissioner Desiree Shire, who's going to discuss some of the recent designations that we've put on the Glendale Register.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks for your attendance tonight, it's great to see all of you. So I have the privilege of presenting which properties have been added to the historic register in 2010, and this is a topic that's close to my heart, as it's how I really became familiar with Jay Platt and the Historic Commission. As in 2009, my husband and I went through this process for our own home. And so with my design background and love of historic restoration and preservation, this was a good fit for me on the commission to kind of give back to the city. So anyway, we'll review with you what we did in 2010 as it relates to historic properties. There were 10 properties that were brought in front of the commission, and the commission voted to recommend seven of those as designated properties. One was later withdrawn, and then we also recommended to city council the authorization of Seven Mills Act. City council voted to designate those six properties that remained as an option, and then also entered into Seven Mills Act contract. So tonight, we'll go over which of those six properties were put on the register, and there's quite a large variety in age and style. I think you'll really enjoy seeing the pictures. So the first one is a house, it's Tudor Revival, it was built in 1924, and this one met the criteria of architecture, which is either an outstanding example of a specific style of architecture, or it may be the last remaining of its style that we really want to preserve for the history of Glendale. This one, you'll note, is unusual because we believe it's one of the only, in its style, that is almost completely brick, in its cladding. And here you have some of the close-up of the details, but it's very unusual. And that's also located in the Ardevan Highlands Historic District. Second property is in Adams Hill, and it's at 1339 Romulus. It's a very modern home, built in 1961, and by a well-known architect, Richard Fleming. This met the architecture criteria. And you'll note from the next slide, from the picture on the left, from the street, it's a very simple, kind of blank elevation, yet when you step into the interior of the home in the picture on the right, really, the architecture kind of just gets out of the way, and you're just have this unbelievable view of the city. And so this is really, post-in-beam style, I should say, but really kind of one of the rare, modern homes in Glendale that we felt was worthy of putting on the register. Then we have one that's very near and dear to Mike Morgan's heart. This is where he grew up as a child. This is at 1441 Royal Boulevard. It's a Spanish colonial revival, built in '31. Again, this met the architecture criteria, and you'll note some of its beautiful, style-defining features, some of the wrought iron and arches and balcony and Spanish tile roof. And this is one of the homes in the Royal Historic District. Number four, this one presented us with a challenge as, I think, two meetings prior to this coming before us, we had a discussion on, should there be an age limit or restriction before we even consider a property to be on the historic register? Should it at least be 30 years old? Should it be 50 years old? And we had quite a discussion about that. Then this came before us, and when I go through the pictures, I think you'll see why we decided, regardless of its age, that it was really noteworthy and important to put on the register. This is our most, I guess I should say, the youngest home on the register. It was built in 1993 by a very well-known architect, Gerald Lomax. This is on Rimcrest Drive, and this really meets two criteria. One is a notable person, which is the architect, and then the second criteria was for its architectural style. There's really three components of this property, or three kind of elements. This picture which you see is really from the street, and it's the concrete structure and facade. The second is, if you look at the photo on the top right, really is this glass jewel box that kind of connects the front facade within the back structure of the home, which is in the left upper photo, which is a steel-glass structure. So it kind of has very, three very different elements of the house, beautifully designed and put together, and the craftsmanship is unbelievable. Like I said, this was done by Lomax, and we believe this is his only property in Glendale. This is the architect, and this is the view from the property. And something I thought was noteworthy of his design, it says, "Art and architecture are one and the same. It is not architecture if it's not art." And if you ever have the ability to visit this home or on a home tier, take advantage of it, it's just unbelievable. Number five, this is a colonial revival style, again, on Royal Boulevard, built in '36 by architect Merrill Ballard, and this met the architecture criteria. So for colonial revival, here are some of the character-defining features, and this was very interesting for its colonial-style massing. And again, this is in the Royal Boulevard Historic District. And then our last, our last property on the register, this is at 1770 Grandview. Many of you probably recognize the property. It's very prominent visual feature in the neighborhood, which is one of its criteria that it met, along with architecture, and also a notable person, which was the architect, I'm sorry, the owner, Robert Jensen. This also was named Casa de Carmen. Oh, I shouldn't know, let's go back for a second. As part of the approval, yeah, there were conditions made that some of the kind of elaboration or accessorization to the property, that those be removed. We felt like they weren't, yeah, that's a good word, embellishments. We felt like those weren't appropriate, they weren't original, and that some of that detracted from the beautiful historical structure. So this is a picture prior to, if you drive by there currently, you'll notice that some of that has been removed. This is some information about the Jensen family. They built theaters and recreational buildings in Glendale, Los Angeles and Pasadena. And this is really why it met the criteria for kind of a visual feature in the neighborhood, its prominent location next to Brand Park. So as a summary, in 2010, there were six new properties that were added to the historic register.
I'll go to Arlene, is she next?
Yes, Arlene is next. You may have noticed that all of those properties were a certain type of property. Commissioner Vidor is going to discuss some other types of properties that can be listed on the Glendale Register.
I'm sorry, I forgot to turn my microphone on. I'm going to talk about something that's near and dear to my heart, and that is, well, that the Glendale Register consists of more than houses, and what qualifies for the Glendale Register? So, yes, obviously residential property and beautiful, single-family homes do, but we have a very broad definition of what qualifies. Any site, building, structure, area, or place, human-made or natural, which is historically or architecturally significant in the cultural, architectural, archaeological, engineering, scientific, economic, agricultural, educational, social, political, or military heritage of the city of Glendale, the state of California, or the United States. You think we had enough there? So in other words, lots of things can qualify for the historic register. So let's take a look at what we have, actually. Right now, we have, I think, 87 designated landmarks in the city, which is amazing because up till about 10 years ago, we had about half of that. 58, or 67%, are single-family homes. But then we divide up the non-houses into a number of categories. We include multifamily residential, which would be apartments and hotels, public institutional, private institutional, commercial, industrial, engineering, such as bridges, museums, and then other. So we've managed to capture everything. So what is other, you're wondering? Good question. Other, we have some others. One of our others is the Miss American Green Cross statue. The American Green Cross was a tree-loving, tree-saving organization that had its heyday in the early part of the 20th century. The statue was originally near Glendale High School. It went lost for a while, and then it made a reappearance at the trailhead in Brand Park. Another other is the Brockman Clock Tower, which is the clock tower portion of the Brockman Home, which is in Brockmont Park. So the home itself is not designated, but the clock tower, which is a very stunning and distinctive feature of the neighborhood, is listed. And then, of course, we have, it says Rest in Peace there, the Oak of Peace, which is now unfortunately the stump of peace, and that is a very, very historical landmark. That is the tree under which emissaries of Colonel Fremont and Governor Pico met to pave the way for peace between the Californios and the Americans at the time, and it also paved the way for statehood. So that's a very significant little tree stump there on the property of the Verdugo Adobe. Then we have some great public institutional buildings that are listed on the Glendale Register. As you can see on the upper left, we have our City Hall, which was a WPA, Construction Economic Stimulus Project in the 1940s after the Depression. We have our beautiful train station, which is not only a Glendale landmark, but a national landmark as well, built in the 20s. On the lower left, we have the United States Post Office, a beautiful Boart building with a stunning interior. I don't know if anybody ever uses it, but just go in there and, you know, your mouth will drop open, which is also on the National Register. And then we have the Water and Power Building, which is right next to the parking lot that you probably all parked in, which is also on the Glendale Register. And I believe the original electrical equipment from the 20s is still firing away inside the walls of that building, so it's quite an amazing place. We have some interesting private institutional buildings as well that have been designated. What you're looking at on the left is probably one of the least known. That is the Civil War Veterans Grand Army of the Republic Meeting Hall. It was built for veterans of the Civil War to meet in around 1900. It's vacant now, I believe, but it's sitting there, and it is still a landmark. And I always think, boy, that would make a nice little military museum or something, but anyway. And then we have the beautiful Glendale YMCA, which, I had some interesting facts about that, and you can read about them on the internet, but I believe that that building, the funds, a quarter of a million dollars in the 20s, 1924, was raised in eight days by a YMCA executive from New York to build that structure. So how it came to be is quite interesting. Then we have multifamily residential, and we are far and few between on this one. Glendale has such beautiful period apartment buildings. There are two that are now registered on the Glendale Register, the Glenn Arden Apartments and the Edmund Stone Apartment on Lexington, on which there is a stunning and the Edmund Stone Apartment on Lexington, on which there is a stunning array of beautiful period apartments on Lexington Drive. And these two are of the Spanish variety. And then, of course, we have the famous, and occasionally infamous Hotel Glendale, which is not only on the Glendale Register, but on the National Register as well, on the corner of Broadway in Glendale, which used to be the center of Glendale. Commercial properties, we do have some registered, and I'm not going to go through all twenty-nine, but I have a few more I want to show you. The one on the extreme left, I think you all know, it's kind of the classic linchpin of Brand Boulevard, it's been there forever. That's the Security Trust and Savings, designed by the prominent architect Alfred Priest. And then, of course, in the middle, a building that was, you know, a business that was in business for probably almost seven decades, the Seeley Furniture Company, which is the gateway into Glendale from the south. And then the Masonic Temple on Brand Boulevard, which you'll hear a little more about in a minute. And then we have museums, and some of the museums, I think all of the museums that we have, there are three total, are converted homes. They used to be residential, but now they're public and they're museums. Two here, you see the Casa Adobe de San Rafael on Dorothy Drive, which many of you know about, one of the oldest houses in Glendale, and the former residence of Thomas Sanchez, who was the first sheriff of LA County. And then, of course, on the right is the Doctor's House, which is one of our, I think, three Victorian homes remaining in Glendale, and it was moved by the Historical Society into Brand Park to save it from being destroyed back in nineteen eighty, and it is open as a museum now, and quite beautifully restored and furnished. And then, of course, there's the Verdugo Adobe that was owned by the Verdugo family that is not pictured here. Then we have some industrial landmarks as well, and two of the interesting ones, one I think everybody knows about, which is a national, which, oops, it's not a national landmark, I'm sorry. It's a Glendale landmark, is the Grand Central Air Terminal, which, of course, was the main terminal of one of the first big bustling urban airports west of the Mississippi, and it has a tremendous story. It is now owned by the Disney Corporation, as I think many people know, and in two thousand and fifteen, in agreement with the city of Glendale, this building will be restored, and hopefully it will be accessible to the public. But it is now in a private industrial setting, so we consider it industrial. And then we have on Broadway, a very interesting and beautiful building, if you look closely at it, nine twenty East Broadway, the Harrower Lab, which was owned and operated by Dr. Harrower, who made some interesting, well, interesting is the word I'll stick with, I think, pharmaceuticals. One of them was called Sanitate, and it had something to do with endocrinology, but I'm not going to go into that. The building was later taken over by Lambert Laboratories and was a manufacturing site for Listerine, but now the building is a school, and it is in absolutely beautiful condition, and that is a Glendale landmark. On the engineering side of things, we have four engineering landmarks. They're all truss bridges. Three of them are a very unique type, which I will mispronounce, the Verandale Truss Bridge, not going to explain what that is, but they're quite unique and rare, and we have three of them and one through truss bridge. The Concord Street Bridge is a through truss bridge, and the Kennelworth is the Verandale, and then we have two others. These bridges were constructed all in the thirties. But you're wondering, well, what's happening? What happened in two thousand and ten? Because all of these landmarks, in fact, all of the non-residential landmarks that we have in Glendale were designated probably between nineteen seventy-seven and nineteen ninety-seven, except for, I think, two, two or three. So there hasn't been much activity in the commercial, non-residential landmarking area. This is a project that the HPC worked on during two thousand and ten. It's the Masonic Temple. There was an array of new windows approved, because this is going to be readapted into an office complex. I think you all know that A Noise Within will be leaving, and there is a project underway to adapt the building for brighter room configurations, so that it can be entirely populated. The owners are doing a voluntary seismic upgrade, as well as restoring the semi-public lobby at the entrance space. And for those of you who have been to the theater there, you know how beautiful that is. There is possibly even a mural encased in the wall in the doorway, and if it is found, it will be restored. The next one that we saw was actually a project that got approved in two thousand and nine, but it was slow to get started, as we all know that we've had a challenging economy. But work is now underway on the Seeley Building, and I thought I saw George Seeley here, but I think he had to leave. And this building, I think we all know, is a building that went up in the twenties as more of a Spanish style, and then later in the forties was kind of adapted into more of a streamlined, modern building. And there is an ongoing effort to go ahead with this project and convert the building into rental and work units that'll be geared toward creative industries. There's also going to be three new live-work units built separately in a separate space alongside of this building. So part of the project was to cut new window openings in the mezzanine to make it more economically viable, but not to compromise the appearance or the status of the building, which is a Glendale landmark. So one of the things is, there's so little activity really on landmarking in the non-residential area, that we thought it would be a good idea to go over some of the incentives, because there are several, one being the Mills Act, which Commissioner Shire mentioned. Property owners who want to list their non-residential properties can get a tax reduction if the owner contractually commits to preserving the building, and these tax breaks can be something along forty to sixty percent, but they can be less or more. The next thing is that there is a redevelopment area facade improvement grant program available in Glendale, non-matching. It's just a straight fifty thousand dollar improvement grant for houses that are listed or in the process of being listed on the Glendale Register. Then, of course, we have the California Historic Building Code, which provides for alternatives and solutions for older buildings that don't exactly meet current modern safety requirements for fire, accessibility, seismic stability, and as long as the buildings can maintain an adequate life safety level, the Historic Building Code gives the owner some relief in being able to deal with the challenges of an older building. Three other incentives are parking space reduction. If you convert your historic, non-residential building to a more intensive or dense use, you don't have to provide more parking, you can leave the parking spaces the same. Additional uses means that there are certain uses that are allowed in some zones where they would not otherwise be allowed if the building wasn't historical. We won't go into the details on that. And then, of course, there are heightened density bonuses that might be applied in the downtown specific plan area. And just to close out, you saw that we looked at the Alex Forecourt, and we are going to be looking this year at the rehabilitation of the Brand Library. There will be a public meeting on February sixteenth at the Brand Library Recital Hall, for anybody who's interested, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, and the architect and preservation architect will be there to talk about the program of rehabilitation and answer questions. So please, if you have a commercial building, bring it to us. It would be exciting to be able to look at some non-residential architecture for potential listing on the Glendale Register. Thank you.
Next up, we have Commissioner Mike Morgan, our resident historian and transportation buff, who's going to share a bunch of cool pictures of early Glendale transportation. He gets two titles, because I didn't want to get rid of the one I gave you, but you got your own.
Oh, that's cool. I love that one. Okay. What I'm going to speak about tonight is, what was it like to be Glendale before it was Glendale, and how did we get to be Glendale itself? Well, one of the ways we got to be Glendale, long before there was anything here, and we were known as the Strawberry Valley, were these four railroads, the Salt Lake, the Pacific Electric, the Southern Pacific Lines, and the Glendale and Montrose Railway. In the beginning, which is where everything starts, in the eighteen eighties, the way Glendale worked out, it was a suburb basically of Los Angeles. As people were moving northwards, Glendale saw a need for having a place for people to go, and so there was a gentleman by the name of W.C. Richardson, who owned some land in the Atwater area, and he granted this land to the Southern Pacific Forest Station that was built down in, let's see, how do we get this to, under button? Up in the upper left-hand corner, in eighteen eighty-three. But it was not until he granted, let's see, let me just read this, it's better that way. "In the Atwater area, granted land to the Southern Pacific Forest Station in eighteen eighty-three. But it was not until he granted the Los Angeles Interurban Railway, the rights for railway up what would become Brand Boulevard in nineteen oh-three, that Glendale would begin to grow." That is the one at the lower left. The Los Angeles Interurban Railway line was built as far as what is now Broadway and Brand. This line brought so many people to live in Glendale, that was then known, as I said, the Strawberry Line, that Glendale was able to incorporate in nineteen oh-six. They generated from nineteen oh-four to nineteen oh-six, almost two thousand people to live in Glendale, and then Glendale was incorporated because of that. On your lower right, you have the Los Angeles and Salt Lake. Now, the Los Angeles and Salt Lake was a railroad that had been, originally the Los Angeles Terminal Railway. They came in also from the south and moved up to what is now Lexington and Glendale Avenue, where they had their freight station. And last but not least, following late, is the Glendale and Montrose Railway, which came in in nineteen oh-nine. The reason for the Glendale and Montrose Railway was the simple fact that the east side of Glendale was not being serviced, whereas the south and the west side of Glendale was. Oops, sorry. What were the two main railroads that were in Glendale at the time? One was the Los Angeles and Salt Lake, which ran steam engines from Los Angeles and San Pedro in nineteen, from nineteen oh-one to nineteen twenty-three. Their terminus, as I said, was at Lexington and Glendale Avenue. The other railroad was the Southern Pacific Railroad, which ran steam engines in Glendale from eighteen eighty-three until the nineteen forties, when they converted to dieselization. There, the Southern Pacific Depot, which was mentioned by Commissioner Vidor, is a national landmark and is down in South Glendale, and I invite you to see it. At the very beginning, though, the first railroad was the Los Angeles Terminal Railway. It was the main route to Glendale from eighteen ninety to nineteen oh-four. It was Glendale's main link to the outside world. It had stops at Glendale and Broadway, and the most interesting thing for me is it had its terminus at Vertigo Park, and I just can't imagine steam engines pulling up to Vertigo Park and people getting out and having a great time, and then getting back on a steam engine and going back down to wherever they came from. Anyway, let me, I should mention, I should go back and mention one other thing. Various interests were vying for putting down rails in the area around Glendale. One of those interests was the merger of Captain John Cross, Nathan Cole, and Frank Washburn, railroad builders who merged to build what was then known as the Los Angeles, Pasadena, and Glendale Railroad Incorporated, February twenty-sixth, nineteen eighty-nine. And by eighteen ninety, the line was incorporated as a Los Angeles Terminal Railway company. The terminal because the line went to Terminal Island down near San Pedro, with lines to Glendale and Vertigo Park. And the next major railroad was the Los Angeles and Salt Lake. Its main yard was the hub of Glendale's rapid growth, and most of the historic districts received their lumber, their stone, all of the materials, their plumbing was from this freight yard, which was at Lexington and Glendale, between Lexington and California. This freight depot was there from the beginning in nineteen oh-one till they were out of business in nineteen fifty-eight. This freight area was responsible for Glendale being named the fastest-growing city in nineteen Our other major steam railroad is the Southern Pacific. It was granted station rights, like I said, from WCB Richardson, which built a station at Cerritos Avenue. Updating the station, they updated the station in nineteen twenty-four, which is the one that's still standing, is now on the National Register. You see a couple of, some of the Southern Pacific Railroad, their engines that were at the Southern Pacific Station over the years. Now we get into the electrics. There were three main electrics. The Los Angeles and Interurban Railway, which was a interest of Elsie Brand and Henry Huntington, which was from nineteen oh-four to nineteen oh-six. They ran green-colored cars, and they were called the green cars. In nineteen oh-six, Brand sold out his interest to the, to Henry Huntington, who then ran his Pacific Electric cars, which were called the red cars. As it says up there, the Pacific Electric ran from nineteen oh-six to nineteen fifty-five, and then after that, to serve the east side, was the Glendale and Montrose Railway, which was nineteen oh-nine to nineteen thirty. The picture in the upper left is the six thousand dollar, very expensive, Pacific Electric Station, and the little trolley car that's right next to it is Maude. Now, what Maude did is it ran from Brand and Broadway to Glendale and Broadway, back and forth as a transit, to fulfill the needs of the east side of Glendale, but in a bit of anger in nineteen oh-seven, they tore up the tracks, and there was no east-side way to get from the east side of Glendale to downtown LA, which is why the Glendale and Montrose was eventually incorporated. You see another picture of the Pacific Electric, not quite as nice as the one that Jay had at the very beginning of Brand Boulevard in the nineteen twenties, when the street had been paved. Before that, the street was only paved on either side of the right-of-way. And last but not least is the Glendale and Montrose Railway in nineteen ten, and that's where the building behind it was the original Glendale Hotel, built in the eighteen eighties. It eventually became one of the first, the Glendale High School, in nineteen oh-four, and then became the sanitarium, which survived until nineteen twenty-five. As I was mentioning, the Pacific Electric and the Los Angeles Interurban Railway were owned by first Leslie, by Leslie S. Brand and Henry Huntington. They opened service in April of nineteen oh-four, and as I mentioned before, brought enough people, so that Glendale was able to incorporate in nineteen oh-six. The Los Angeles Interurban Railway sold, was sold, Elsie Brand sold their, his interest in nineteen oh-six to Henry Huntington. They ran three-car trains into Glendale every twenty minutes, carrying eight thousand four hundred passengers per day, or three and a half million passengers per year. They operated in Glendale until they were sold in nineteen fifty-five. And you see, a map on the left is just from the subway terminal up into Glendale, and then off to the left, off to Burbank. It's a picture, earlier picture, of Brand Boulevard in the nineteen tens, and you see that the track is there, but on either side of the track, it's still right-of-way with dirt, and to the right of that is the Pacific Electric Station, the six thousand dollar Pacific Electric Station, which was a drawing point for people to come to Glendale. They had Spanish lunches, and you would come, they would serenade you, and they would hope to sell you a lot, which some of those lots eventually became our historic districts today. I just want to give you a little bit of feeling of what it was like to travel on the Pacific Electric from basically nineteen forty to nineteen fifty-five, because I like these cars the best. You would go down to the subway terminal, which was at Hill Street in Los Angeles, and get on what was called a PCC, which was the newest of the trolley cars that the Pacific Electric operated. You'd come out at the portal, which is at Beverly and Glendale Boulevard. One of the ways you might go is, they used to run three- to five-car trains, and the three- to five-car trains were called the City of Glendale, because they came into Glendale. The next picture to your right, to the top right, is a picture where you're at the Ivanhoe Hills, which is at Riverside Drive, and you would be going over the wash. The next picture on the lower left is a picture of the three-car train, the City of Glendale, but not quite as big as the most city of Glendale's, at the Los Angeles River. And if you're driving on the freeway, you'll see there's some pilings there. That's where the bridge crossed, they're still there today. One of my favorite pictures of Brand Boulevard, with PCC running down, unfortunately had to truncate it, but the Alex is on the left, is on the right, excuse me. And the last but not least is a PCC turning left on its way to Burbank, but the building in the background is the school that I went to from nineteen fifty-six until nineteen sixty-five, its incarnation, so. Unfortunately, the lines were all gone. Unfortunately, the lines were all gone by the time I got here. This is the love of my life, is the Glendale-Montrose Railway. It was founded by Edgar Douglas Good, who was considered the father of Glendale. He founded it in 1909, and the reason he founded it was because the, all the property on the east side of Glendale was not being serviced by any lines, and life in a city depended on electric transit. So, he figured out a way that he could run a line from Wilson, which was Third Street, along abandoned County Road to Eagle Rock. And in Eagle Rock, they could catch the Los Angeles Railway, which was another competing interest with the Pacific Electric, and from there get down, get to downtown. That way, his properties, instead of losing value, gained value. He then had, he then extended it to Vertigo Park on July 4, 1910, which was a big thing for the city of Glendale. Everybody turned out. He won a $25,000 bonus for having the line there by July 4, 1910, but unfortunately, the people reneged on the bonus, so he never got it. They extended the line to Montrose in April 1913, making Montrose open to, in fact, Montrose was a subdivision, and it was, because of this line coming up there, they were able to sell lots, which they wouldn't have been able to do had the electric line been there, because it was considered so far in the sticks. One of the interesting things about the Glendale-Montrose Railway, upcoming with the Rossmoine Historic District, is a lot of the lumber for the Rossmoine Historic District was provided by this railroad from 1921 until 1930. Unfortunately, the depression came, and it was incredibly underfunded, and it ended its service in December of 1930. But I like the picture, that's the one of the gentleman on the lower left, they're at Vertigo Park at the time, and it just amazes me that there would be a trolley car that large, just sitting out there in front of Vertigo Park. So, think about it, the next time you go to Vertigo Park and see that they had a whole trolley service that was there for 21 years. This is just a couple of pictures of the Glendale-Montrose. The picture in the upper left is, they got these brand-new cars, it was a lot of money for them. The picture is taken on Glendale Avenue, and it's right, literally, almost outside from this building where we're at now. If you just turn onto Glendale Avenue and go about half a block up, that's where their terminal used to be. Another picture of a proud operator for the Glendale-Montrose, that's the right, upper-right picture. And my favorite picture is, even trolleys have bad days. This is coming down Kenyatta, and unfortunately, the trolley couldn't get out of the way of the truck, so. Another thing about Glendale, Glendale in the 20s always considered itself very progressive and very modern. One of the sad parts was that the hotel that I mentioned earlier, the Glendale Hotel, which was a sanitarium, Glendale decided that it was too modern for an old building that was something that your grandparents would have wanted to see, so they tore it down, and eventually, other buildings were built there. But one of the things that they did do in 1923, the city fathers were unhappy that we still had steam engines, my God, steam engines were something that you shouldn't have in Glendale, a progressive city. So, they told the Los Angeles and Salt Lake that they had to get rid of their steam engines. So, there was an agreement between the Glendale-Montrose Railway and the Los Angeles and Salt Lake to get rid of their steam engine, and they would bring this new, modern, progressive electric freight motor. This freight motor hauled everything that's in the Chrysina Valley from 1923, when it came, until 1930, when the line expired. It still worked in Glendale until 1938 to the yard that was at Lexington and Glendale. And fortunately, this engine still exists, it's G&amp;M 22, and it still exists at the Orange Up Air Railway Museum in Paris, California. So, if you want to see a real piece of Glendale history that actually came up and down our streets, it's still there, available for you to take a look at it. Glendale also being a very progressive city, was interested in transportation planning. And in 1926, they hired the firm of Harlan Bartholomew and Associates to do a transit plan for Glendale. And the plan was for the unification of all rail and bus lines in Glendale. And when you look at this, this plan in 1926, it's better than most of the plans we have today. It's very interesting in the way they integrate and how people can get around. I mean, it almost makes Glendale, in a way, à la walking, that you, like the city of San Francisco, you can get from anywhere that you need to get by rail, bus, or electric Anyway, as time goes on, and time always goes on, there is a transition. Unfortunately, the Glendale rail lines became very expensive, the, the, the depression came in, the Glendale-Montrose Railway ran out of money, so it expired. So, they substituted Pacific Electric buses in 1931. The buses ran up and down all of the streets in Glendale that had been traversed by the Glendale-Montrose Railway, along with other streets in Glendale that they had been running before. If you look at the picture on the upper left, that's Montrose in 1923, with Glendale-Montrose number one, running right in front of what is Vertigo and Honolulu Avenue. You look, by 1940, they had converted the rail lines, and there's a PE bus making a turn there on Honolulu down Vertigo. This is, in the 1920s, was one of the Pacific Electric's advertisements for converting their big trolley cars to motor buses, and this is one of the motor buses that they ran. And then one of my other favorite pictures, this is Vertigo, this is Vertigo Road by Glendale College in 1947, with one of the, the Pacific Electric buses traveling up and down the roadway. After 1953, the Pacific Electric, which was a private company and ran this, sold out to another private company, the Metropolitan Coach Lines. Unfortunately, the Metropolitan Coach Lines authority was to take all rail lines and make them into bus lines. Eventually, they were acquired by the Metropolitan, the Los Angeles Metropolitan Transit Authority in 1958. And finally, the Los Angeles Metropolitan Transit Authority was replaced by our now, the SCRD in 1964. Glendale got into the transit business in 1984 with the B-line, and you see some pictures there. And lowly at the upper left-hand corner is the only trolley we have in Glendale today, which is the little trolley at the Americana brand, which eventually comes out when they let it out of its jail. Last but not least is, this is Glendale's transit today. We end where we began, at Brandon Broadway in 2011, and I just wanted to say one last thing.
Here it is, out of jail.
There it is. Thank you. Anyway, this.
One more thing.
One more thing. This picture brings us back to where Glendale really began, Brandon Broadway, the terminus of the Los Angeles Interurban Railway, which brought so many people to Glendale in 1904, and the interchange with our other railroad, the Glendale-Montrose, and you have Pacific interests on the east side of Glendale. In many ways, Glendale has grown far beyond its founding fathers' visions, but still retains the feeling, there is no place like home, Glendale. Thank you.
So, we're closing in on public comment, but we have Commissioner Mardian, who's going to quickly go over some of our historic district guidelines and how to use them.
I'll do it brief. I'm sure some of you already know about these guidelines, but I'll, this is an overview. But I thought I'd talk about what our design guidelines entail, although it's a 200-page document, but you don't have to read every single page to get to what you're looking for. But first, we have, actually, our districts are categorized properties in a contributor and non-contributor. Contributor, let me go back up a little bit. First, we have to, the staff has to determine whether the scope of work can be approved over the counter, or it comes before HPC. Then we do an overview of the, of the survey, and what the property is all about, and its architecture features, and identify the importance of the building. Contributor is built during the period significance, and has dramatically, there has no alteration done to it, and it has kept its integrity. Non-contributors are not in the period of significance, and alterations have removed it from being as such. The guidelines are basically guidance to the, other than city guidelines, cover major building elements, only apply to the street immediately adjacent to the, I'm sorry, apply to the view of the street immediately adjacent to the property. We treat contributors differently than non-contributors. Our guidelines are not a rule, they should, not shall, and help determine the type of view project will require. If the proposed work is visible from the street, staff level review if proposed work conforms with the historic design guidelines, or it comes to the HPC. If it's not visible from the street, staff level review proposed for conforms with the single-family guidelines, they can get an approval. Otherwise, it goes to Historic Preservation Commission. There are thresholds, they're the same as the design guidelines, I mean, Design Review Board thresholds that we have on outside the districts. Over 200 square feet comes to the commission, over 700 square feet or second story comes to the commission, anything below that, it's a staff review. Our visibility is basically from the street, and in some cases, on a corner lot, we look at it differently, we take the street elevations, and those are the affected elevations. As some of you know, we have 13 architectural style, common architectural style identified in our guidelines, varying from Victorian, Spanish Revival, I don't want to go through every single one of them, Tudor, French-inspired, minimal traditional, ranch, modern. And we have major building elements on all these homes. Main characteristics of these homes are sightings, exterior finishes, roof, porches, windows and doors, architectural details, massing in addition. For example, guidelines for major buildings and elements of Tudor Revival styles are also covered in our design guidelines, covered in page seven. These are specific guidelines that relates to eve details, half-timbering, window treatment, chimneys, door entries, also, you know, the type of detailing on the glass. In this particular case, it's for Tudor, but each, this style is identified the same way. So, if your home is a Spanish Revival, you go to the Spanish Revival section, it'll tell you the major character-defining feature. Can I change my window? Yes, you can. That's a, I know we have a.
You can't.
You can't, yeah. I know we have allergies against wood door replacements for a while, but now, we're going, we're moving forward. But if you have a Spanish home, our guidelines dictate what windows to use. We have, we're very specific in our guidelines. The picture on the top left, I know it's not clear enough, but those are not good example of replacement. And the ones in the bottom define the window treatments on a district home, which are more articulated, more detailed. Then we have what we call non-contributors, which are buildings that build after the significant, have no architectural significant, and there's a lot of mixtures of detailing done, and windows don't match, massing is totally inconsistent with the neighborhood. Can I add to my house? Yes, you can. I mean, these are examples of second-story additions done on existing homes, which do not take the integrity of the existing home, or keep the integrity the same, the character, the detailing, and it's not really visually intrusive. And if you look at these homes, they're all maintain their front setbacks, side setbacks. We also have non-new construction in historic district, which you saw today, and we'll continue it for later, on, we call them infill construction. See, is that it? That's it? Okay. But I want to mention something. Although our design guidelines have just started to be tested, they are great. We won an award not too long ago from Los Angeles Conservancy of American Planning Association. This is also due to the community effort and support. We also, again, do community, the past commissions and present commission, our Historic Preservation Commission won an award last year, August, from National Alliance of Preservation Commission. These are nation, nationally-known committees, and we are grateful to be part of those reviews. And always thanks to Mr. Jay Platts for submitting that application. I think it was a great thing to do. But overall, I think our design guidelines are just being started, and I know it's a little early to tell what happens, but we're working towards that. And with that, I want to thank Jay for helping us put this presentation together, and thank you for this community.
With that, we have three quick updates.
Three quick updates, or?
Just so, just so you have some numbers and one really important community meeting that's coming up. If you read the paper on Saturday, you saw that, wow, we've got some historic districts percolating, happening, moving forward, excitement in the community about historic districts. We have three districts active in the process, and just the numbers are kind of exciting. I wanted you to see this. Right now, we have 131 properties in our designated historic districts. If the three, if the three districts proposed right now all come to pass, that's going to add 741 new properties, so it's going to be a huge jump, and we'll have 872 properties designated. We've got a bunch of other neighborhoods with various levels of interest, various points in the process. So, we think that this is a successful and exciting process, people are really invigorated by it. It's a great tool to help protect neighborhood character, and, and we're seeing that people are really interested in it. What is amazing, though, is we haven't seen a lot of work in our historic districts so far, because we've had a recession coinciding with the time that we started having the districts. But once that changes, and when things are moving again, we're going to see the Historic Preservation Commission get a lot more active in reviewing projects, getting more experience doing project design review in the districts, and really putting those design guidelines to work. So, it's really exciting that we have such a good set of guidelines right now. Here's a picture of Vic in Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Oh, you've.
He flew out, as we always note, at his own expense, not the city's expense, to pick up our award for best practices in protection of historic resources, which was really exciting, because this was a national-level award that was given not only to the Preservation Commission, but the way the nomination was written, it was about the historic district process after Cumberland Heights. The commission and the community came together, found a way to create a new ordinance, found a way to create new guidelines, and really made it work. So, it was pretty exciting to get that kind of recognition. And we also have just nominated today two recently completed projects in Glendale that show how preservation is kind of percolating into different city agencies. We're working with our colleagues in the Parks Department and other agencies to kind of preserve important historic resources inside parks that not, wouldn't have necessarily been preserved. A lot of people think of a park as, we're putting it in an urban area, let's clear the site and build a park. But in the case of Glendale Heritage Garden at Cedar and Harvard, we have a beautiful Craftsman bungalow that was restored, and is now used by the Youth and Family Services Center. And then in Adams Hill, we have this great little streamlined modern gas station that's kind of the centerpiece of this very cool little pocket park in the, in the neighborhood. And both parks are hugely successful, we're really happy about that. And then finally, we have a lot of work that's been percolating at Brand Library in terms of some restoration. Restoration is not even the right word, it's going to be seismic upgrades, HVAC upgrades, and most importantly, kind of reconfiguring the way the space is used, which if you use Brand Library, it's a beautiful place, but going in there, it's a little crazy and unusable. We have a great team of architects working on this, and you should know that on February 16th, at 6:30 at Brand Library, there's going to be a community meeting like this one, except it's not going to run as long, and they're going to listen to you much sooner than we're, we're able to tonight. But for everyone who cares about Brand and wants to find out what's happening, and also share your views about what you want to see at Brand, this is the opportunity to do that. After this meeting, we're going to have a special Historic Preservation Committee, or Commission meeting in March to consider those changes. So, again, the public will have another opportunity to weigh in. My final updates, and then we're over, except for our hearing item. If you don't want to stay for the hearing item, we understand. We had an intern who worked for our department for over five years, named Manny Valenzuela, who just left us and moved on to another project with the Parks Department and the Housing Department. And we, he wasn't able to be here, and even if he was, I'm not sure if he would have been able to stay. But we just want to publicly acknowledge in this forum, the amazing contributions he made as an intern to the work that we do. Before I started, certainly, he was deeply enmeshed in the Craftsman Survey, which was a huge project. Since I've been here, he had a huge input into our CRID database, which we're going to be debuting soon, which is going to be our database of all known identified resources in Glendale, which is going to be a huge thing for us. So, we're very happy to have had Manny, and we wish him luck. He's running for city council in Temple City, his hometown, so leaving the commission has been great for him. But I also wanted to welcome Christina Park, who's sitting in the back of the room, who's our new intern, a potential and probable preservation student, and she did a lot of work to help us get this night put together. So, thank you.
[applause]
So thank you, Christina. Thank you, the commissioners, for a great presentation, and thank you all for coming. And now, we're ready to hear any thoughts and comments that you have.
I know. I have two cards, Mr. Jay.
Two cards?
Yeah, John Lakasha, who left, and Victoria Laskin.
And if you didn't submit a card and want to share something-
If you have anything to say, come forward. Don't? Okay, too.
Ice break.
Thanks. I'd like to say goodnight at this point. My name's Elaine Wilkerson. I'm standing here speaking to you as Elaine Wilkerson, not as any of my previous associations, so please take it just as a resident, a loving resident of Glendale. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Historic Preservation Commission on showing so much initiative and raising topics for conversation at your commission. I've been looking at the list that you have, and I'm so impressed that some of these subjects are coming forward, because they're things that we've needed for a long time to discuss. Secondly, I'm thrilled to see the Parks Department show initiative and leadership in listing two Parks properties, but I think it might be time, if you want us, little suggestion, for the commission to be approaching the city to list other city properties, including more parks. And I would suggest, for example, when we did the Municipal Services Building seismic upgrade, there was a commitment that that building would be listed after it was completed, and it's something to pursue. I think that there are many other buildings, the Auditorium, GWP facilities, for example. There are so many fascinating structures and facilities they have that are worthy of consideration. And of course, these are all consideration, I'm not going to say that I'm recommending they be listed or not listed, but at least examined in that, for that purpose. Spar Heights is a Parks building that we should look at. Finally, I, I'm putting on my planner hat, I'm going to say to you, I think it's time to pull out the 1977 Historic Preservation Element and look at it in the context of the successes the city has experienced over, particularly the last 10 years, and update this to be a celebration of those successes. Because I think it doesn't give a very good foundation for the future anymore, because we've achieved a lot of the things that needed to be achieved, but more importantly, it doesn't say that we are a city that cares about historic preservation by all these wonderful things we've done over the last 10 years. I just wanted to mention passing, when I arrived here, the list of designated buildings, properties, was much less than half of what it is today. There hadn't been any listed in several years, and it's been like an exponential growth of listings. And I think that's because people have faith in the importance of preserving our past and our history, and they are not afraid of it anymore. I think there was a fear at one point. And I think that's why it's time to just maybe get this document out, and if you have an agenda that's a light agenda unlike tonight, you might want to even be looking over sections of it and talking about it, because you might find it something that can be updated in-house with just your input and some staff input. It doesn't need to be redone from scratch, it just needs to have the last 30 years added on to it. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson. Okay, anybody else wishes to speak? Thank you all for coming.
Could I make a comment that was-
Come forward, sir.
The comment that was made early in the meeting regarding the enlargement of the stage area for the theater, everyone should certainly understand-
Excuse me, sir, it's not an agenda item, so we can't discuss it?
I'm sorry, wrong subject? Okay?
Yeah, wrong subject, it's not on the agenda to discuss.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Okay. Let's move on.
Okay, well, everyone's welcome to stay for the reopening of the 1459 Mountain Hearing.
It'll be short, believe me.
And we apologize, we couldn't bring the snacks that we bought for you all into this room. If we were back in our old home, we would have had delicious snacks, so. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Act Two.
I'm coming out to put a fence up.
Yeah.
I'm coming out to put a fence up.
Well, it may not, because I just looked at my notes, there's something else I want to mention. Okay. That's okay. No, I don't want it to go any further. No, I, because there's other things that I forgot to mention that I just remembered.
Oh, about the property?
About the property. You know, they have an approval for a two-story house that is still valid. They could come back and go do that, and it's valid by Design Review.
It is, but I can also give it to you.
I think was, I, that's why I want to find out. So I'm willing to live with two and a half instead of a two-story.
Go there, and you'll be able to find it.
Go ahead. We can see. Open it. Okay. Can we move on, Mr. Jay? Please. All right. Well, this item was continued earlier. It's 1459 East Mountain Street, and I'll open the discussion. Any comments from staff before we-
No, no comments. I, I just would like to invite the commission to make a decision, whatever decision you'd like to make. It's much clearer if you have a decision as opposed to a case being left without a decision, with a two to two vote.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Agani, that we need to make a decision today. But before, I want to open the public hearing and ask the applicant a few questions. You may, Mr. Franco, I know it's been a long night for you, but it's a long night for us, too, so. You're the first one to break ground, so you got to be patient.
Thank you.
I know the last meeting, when you came up here, you said you had a design approved by Design Review Board-
Correct.
-a while back. Is that still valid?
Yes.
And what was that design? Was it a two-story design?
Correct. It's a, instead of leaving the pool where it is, and leaving the garage pretty much where it is, we were switching the pool and the garage. So the garage entrance was from Royal, and it was a two-story house on Royal, so it would have been much taller than the design we're proposing.
But what was the number of stories when you're looking at it from Mountain? Would it have been two-story over basement?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, it would have been two-story, but a little bit higher.
The garage.
Correct. So it would have been higher from Mountain and higher from Royal.
Well, it's almost three-story, on, three-story on mountain side, basically.
Correct. We weren't lowering it, you know how I said we're lowering on Mountain? In that case, we weren't lowering it, it was just on grade.
Now, is that permit, I mean, is that review still valid?
It is until the end of 2012.
Now, thank you very much, Mr. Franco, you kind of refreshed my memory and gave me a little more insight. But I want to go back to staff. How does that work, since we have a district now, and he has a Design Review Board approval?
His Design Review approval is actually approved. It's still a-
Is it valid, because we have a district?
It's valid, I think, with the extensions until the end of this year, they're valid.
Well, I know, the extension is valid, but now that we have a district, how does that, does that conflict with anything?
The application, sorry, Jay, the application was approved before the district was adopted, so it was consistent with the zoning and design review regulations at that time.
If the applicant chose to build the design approved by DRB, they could proceed with that under the permit that was granted at that point. They've chosen to scale back the plan considerably, so we're reviewing a different plan than what was approved.
So he has the option to go back and do what he has gotten approved?
If they chose to, or were able to.
Well, thank you, Mr. Franco.
And we certainly appreciate the fact that they chose to respect the spirit of the historic district.
Well, I appreciate that, too, because I rather see this design than that other design. And I'm willing to compromise that two and a half feet, and I want to make it clear that this should not set precedent, this is due to topography and the location of the, you know, how this sighting is done, I think that's the best he could do, and I'm not going to be stickler on two and a half feet. So I want to say that. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and if anybody has a comment, if not, then we'll make, we'll take another motion, another, another vote. Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Thank you.
I have a thought, that's kind of what I've been thinking about. One, we want to be reasonable as a commission. The other, we need to abide by some setbacks and some limitations and some, you know, minimum dimensions. What I was going to present before you had offered, what you had chair, is really, it's a detriment to the owner and the architect that there, that we're one short commission, because a decision would have been made tonight. One of us would have been overrolled, you know, we're at a stalemate currently, or we were. The, what I was going to offer up as a motion or an idea was, could we say, you know, with the 20-foot setback, with the shutters being added like we presented before, while giving the leeway to staff, that if the architect is not successful in being able to redesign, which two of us thought he probably could, and maintain his three-car garage, if that cannot be done at a look of it, then it would give the staff an opportunity to encroach into that 20-foot setback up to the 17-foot, three inches, whatever, at a staff level later. So we kind of still uphold our setback, but giving a little bit of leeway to staff, and that really would be the deciding factor of the fifth person, had we had one here tonight. How does-
I'm trying to think how you would write that condition, and it may be a, not a condition, but a consideration to consider-
Yeah.
-reexamining that, the garage wing, and seeing what can be done to pull that corner back further than 17 feet, but the commission recognizing that it may be, that's the design at 17 feet. I would probably recommend we write that as a consideration rather than a condition. A condition would be a binding requirement. Consideration allows some leeway to look at some options still.
And if I may add, what Mr. Loomis suggested is in fact consistent with some of our practices with the Design Review Boards and the City Council and the agency when they are acting as Design Review authorities. Sometimes they recommend staff to work on those end goals, and if they're achieved, then that's fantastic. If they're not, it's understood that staff has evaluated every possible option with the applicant.
How do you feel about that?
That's very creative, I like it, and I would go along with it if I understand that whatever motion we end up with, it's not going to be a mandate, that there is the, for lack of a better word, an out clause if it doesn't work out. Because my feeling is that for 2.66 feet, I'm dealing with the Royal Boulevard Historic District here. This is a very unusual situation, and I agree with you, Commissioner Shire, that there will be other similar, unusual, unique corner houses that we're going to have to work through, and they'll probably all be different, so it'll be on a case-by-case basis. In this case, I don't think this is a precedent setting, because it is a unique case. Nothing will look like this. It may look weird, but it won't look like this one. That we shouldn't be draconian about 2.66 feet when a tremendous effort has been made to put a house in here that's acceptable. Yes, I want us to abide by the historic district guidelines, and I think in the spirit of things, what we've come to agree upon here is in compliance with the historic district guidelines, because we're dealing with Royal Boulevard. So I'm still feeling very strongly to be loose about this 17.34 feet on the mountain side. I'm, so whatever we come up with, there has to be an allowance for, you know, I don't want to railroad people into it as long as they're willing to see what they can do, but that it isn't binding on them. So I'm sort of agreeing with you and sort of staying with my old position.
I think that's what you're saying, a consideration.
Yes. We could write the specific language regarding that consideration on the 20 feet, but I think if we, if you were inclined to approve the project with conditions, you had indicated before, the four staff conditions you were comfortable with, one of the, both of the previous motions included the option to add shutters at the architect's discretion, and then you would write a consideration to modify the mountain elevation or mountain, the wing-facing mountain boulevard, the setback to be 20 feet if possible. And with the understanding that staff and the architect would look at some options to pull that back, but that would not be a binding decision on them, that would be something they would look, we would continue to look at with the applicant.
Thank you very much. One comment, with all due respect, Commissioner Vidor, this is not an extraordinary property, it's a corner lot, it has some topography, so there's nothing unique about it. My change on my thoughts on it was, you know, I don't want to see a three-story building or two and a half, two-story over a basement. That's where my justification was coming. But I don't think we should take this property as being unique or something different that we don't see every, it's a corner lot. There's nothing special about it.
But it's a corner lot on a chevron-shaped corner.
Yeah, but he's, he's tried to, I mean, that's, well, I wanted to mention that, I know we are a commission, we may disagree, we're not all going to agree all the time.
I hear what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying.
I mean, across the street, all have similar topography, they've approached it differently, but I'm willing to live with the seven and a half, with the, I think Commissioner Shire's direction is to make it a consideration, if that's what it is. I think let them try to come up, you know, if they can make it.
Yes.
If they can't, then, you know, I'd rather see a one-story house versus a two-story. With that, I'll take a motion. If Mr. Morgan has any comments.
No, I pretty much agree with what Commissioner Vidor has said on it, and I agree with you, Chairman, on it. I mean, my only concern is, are we kicking it just down the road? I mean, if they can't, they've already said basically that they truthfully can't change it. I mean, if they do, then they'll end up losing the three-car garage. I mean, I think, yeah, we should let it go up to-
I don't think they need to lose a three-car garage. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think it's a good idea to have a three-car garage, that street is already permit parking. It'll help.
Right.
With that-
I'll make a motion, then.
Okay, let's move on.
I'll make a motion regarding 1459 East Mountain, that the, that we approve it tonight with the condition of shutters being added to the facade, Royal and Mountain, at the architect's discretion, and that there is strong consideration being made to uphold the 20-foot setback as a consideration to be worked out with the staff.
And could we just clarify the condition at the architect's discretion, meaning-
Location.
-where it makes sense to have a shutter?
The shutters, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, of course, with your input, too, with your input, too.
Staff, staff review, yes.
Okay. Any second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner, Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Shire.
Yes.
Commissioner Vidor.
Yes.
Herr Person Morgan.
Yes.
And I think we have a fifth commissioner, Solomon.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Well, I think we've come to a long day today, this is one of the longest meetings we've had for a long time. I want to thank staff and whoever was involved, and all of you guys for putting this presentation together today, and take a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're adjourned?
We're adjourned.
Okay.